Let me mute you. Where's my mute?
Morning.
So Austin is ready?
Yeah, all right.
All right, Chambers County Commissioners Court come to order. We're still waiting on Commissioner Tass, but we're gonna go and get rolling. He had issues rebooting his computer or something this morning. And I know we've gone back to in-person meetings. I hated to take this step, but at this time I thought it's the right thing to do. Have to be virtual for too long. For that, Bobby House, good to see you this morning.
Good to see y'all, Judge.
Bobby has offered to volunteer to open the court prayer this morning. Bobby?
Thank you, Judge. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for the day. We thank you for your blessings that you've blessed us with. Lord, we come before you to conduct the business of Chambers County today. We ask you, Lord, that you give each one that has a part of this wisdom that only you can give. And Lord, we are turmoil in this country and in our community right now with COVID. I just ask that you place your healing hand on those that are suffering. Protect those that have not caught the virus at this time. Most importantly, Lord, may we as a community do all we can to help those that are less fortunate than we are. Now, God indirectly keep us all safe. And again, as for your wisdom as we meet this morning, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Okay, Bobby, you want to lead us into pledges?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands.
One nation.
Nation under God.
Under God. Texas flag's coming up, Bob.
You're gonna do this, Judge. I've got all that.
Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to Texas. One state, under God, one. Thank you, Bobby. We'll see you back at 11:00.
At 11:00, Judge. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Still see no Commissioner Tass for the record. We're going to no citizen comments this morning, 1.1, discuss consider health department COVID update. Mary Beth, I asked Mary Beth and Ron to handle that this morning. Mary Beth, if you'll get us started. You're muted, Mary Beth.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. See, are you ready for me for the update?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, has Ron already talked or my first?
No, you're first. Ladies first.
Okay, so good morning. So I'd like to just give a brief update. And this is some of the information that we discussed when we had a meeting on Saturday. What I did was, was kind of go through some things on what we're currently doing on the public health side, on the epidemiology response. So what we did, what we have done here in the county over the past 18 months is continue to follow case investigations and push, you know, thorough up-to-date information to our residents of the county to try to protect them and keep them safe. When we first started noticing this surge locally in our county was about July the 7th. So this information is gonna be current through about July the 7th is whenever we first started noticing this surge. And we, you know, we put out that press release on Saturday because we know that our hospitals are overwhelmed. Our EMS system is overwhelmed here locally with our cases are going up. We know that there's a lot of people who were sick, who were in the hospital, a lot of families are affected. And so this information is based on that. So let's see, we've had about 1,474 cases in the past five weeks. And just to put that in a perspective, it took us from March until October last year, about seven months to get 1,474 cases. So in that five-week period, it took us that time. And that represents about an 1,100% increase in cases in that time period. And the average age of new cases is about 37. And we've had everything from, I think, a one-month-old all the way to, you know, 90-year-olds. But the average age tends to be in the 30s. So we have had 16 deaths in the past five and five-and-a-half-week time period. And that represents two 30- to 40-year-olds, three 40- to 50-year-olds, four 50- to 60-year-olds, four 60- to 70-year-olds, and three 80-years and older. That's nine males and seven females. And that represents two, two of those people were fully vaccinated, one was partially vaccinated, and the remaining 13 were not vaccinated. And so we're working hard to get the vaccine status updated on our hospitalizations as well as those who unfortunately lose their life to COVID. Our current hospitalizations, this is as of yesterday, because it is first thing in the morning and we're still trying to update that. Current, this is known hospitalizations. We don't always have this information, but our known residents were hospitalized. We currently have 33, and that represents three that are fully vaccinated, one we don't have their vaccine status, and the remaining 29 are not vaccinated. Here locally in our county for our hospitals, that includes Bateside, Rysland, and then patients ER. Their hospitalization rate is at 85%, meaning that 85% of their hospital capacity is of COVID patients. So again, whenever we're looking towards, you know, medical care in general, 85% of their capacity is with COVID patients. As you're aware, yesterday FDA granted full approval for their COVID Pfizer's COVID vaccine for ages 16 and older, ages 12 to 15, and the third shot still are in emergency use authorization. But I know that Moderna is also applied for full approval. We continue to vaccinate with first doses, second doses, and third doses, and those third doses are for those immunocompromised population. We expect that sometime late September, there will be the booster dose, which is, it's all the same vaccine. And we expect approval for that booster dose coming in late September. We're already planning on those, opening up those pods throughout the county. Let's see, so our vaccination rates have increased from 37% to 42%, which is, represents about a 5% increase. And that's again in that same timeframe, the past five weeks. So we're extremely proud of that. But again, Texas, the fully vaccinated rate is at about 55%. And so we're still well below the state average. And let's see, our positivity rate remains, our testing positivity rate remains at about 38%. Let's see, some of the things we're doing also, we're still continuing to work closely with the schools. We know the schools have been back in session, some of them for less than a week, some of them going on two weeks. And there are cases in the schools. We're working closely with all of those. And we just want to remind everyone, there are at-home tests, and there's nothing against doing an at-home test, but we want to remind everyone that if you do an at-home test and you do test positive, we need people to still follow the same isolation instructions. Please notify your contacts because it's fair to them that they know that they've been exposed. They need to really watch for symptoms and to get tested if they need to. That, this is the way we're gonna slow the spread, is by watching for symptoms, getting vaccinated, wearing our mask in public spaces or when we're unable to social distance, hand-washing, all those good old-fashioned things. And really trying to, we're really just trying to continue to educate our residents about pushing accurate, science-based information. We're still battling this infodemic and the misinformation that's out there. So I think Ron may talk about, we've applied for a regional antibody infusion center that we're trying to, we've applied for that. We've been working on that for about two weeks now. Ron may touch base a little bit on that here shortly, but I'll entertain any questions if you'll have any. And again, we appreciate the support. Everyone's working extremely hard around the clock.
Hey, Mary Beth.
Yes, sir.
That infusion station, is that the Regeneron you're talking about?
Yeah, so it's the Regeneron, and we're fortunate that we're, there's several sites right now that are up and going that I know that local healthcare providers here locally are referring to. Jefferson County, and they just opened up a regional one, I think with Harden, Jefferson, Orange, they just opened one. There was already, I think, an infusion site set up through either Baptist or St. Nees. There are several urgent care facilities that have those. We know that Methodist has been doing the antibody infusions, patients ER. So we have had multiple options for primary care providers to refer patients to for the antibody infusion. But again, you know, you have to qualify for that, for those infusions. But yes, so we're really hopeful for that state assistance in getting that, but it's exactly, it's for the Regeneron.
So for those that don't have a clue what you're talking about.
Okay.
Will you, will you kind of give overview, explain?
Yes, so for those who have, so the antibody, the monoclonal antibody therapy is, it's basically manufactured antibodies to respond to COVID-19 if you've been either exposed to the virus or if you actually have tested positive to the virus in the past 10 days. But I can tell you that there's so many people who have tested positive that the criteria right now are basically if you've tested positive in the past 10 days, plus you need to have one more diagnosis along with that, whether you meet a certain age criteria, an underlying health condition, weight, certain type of medication therapy. If you meet that criteria, then, you know, if you'll get the monoclonal antibody infusion, it really reduces, you know, symptom. And the goal of that is to keep you out of the hospital again, to not overburden the hospital system. And they've shown to be really effective. If you're in the hospital, then, you know, this is much different than what they would treat you with in the hospital. This is to keep you out of the hospital.
Okay. Mary Beth, I'd like to say, I want to thank y'all for everything you're doing and our paramedics and all of our first responders because, I mean, I've been watching and everything y'all do and just, I greatly appreciate it and everything y'all do.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Mary Beth, where would someone go to get one of the at-home test kits?
So I'm not sure, but what I, what I hear is that I think that maybe the pharmacies have them, HEB, you know, CVS, they have those at-home, at-home tests. The, a lot.
I know HEB's got them, or they did, and I had somebody, I knew somebody that picked one out.
Okay, they have, the CDC has really good guidance on there about, you know, about those tests, about reporting them. And again, you know, there's, you know, a thousand conspiracy theories or things like that. Our number one goal is to keep everyone safe. We want the correct information to get out there and people to stay home if they're sick and not spread this. So if people do do that at-home test because they don't want to go in or, you know, don't want to go to urgent care, please do those. We have the pinned information to our Facebook page as well as on our public health website. We have the information all on there on what you should do if you test positive or if you've been exposed. And Samantha's also working on some really good graphics for us to fish out.
Okay, and my last question is, what's the timing, do you think, it would be before you get the antibody infusion center set up?
Well, it's a really good question. And since it's a state resource, we're hoping that they come with a team and it's, I'm not gonna say 100% self-sufficient, but they will come ready to go. We offer the site and we do offer assistance. We do offer resources as well. So Ron may be able to answer that a little bit better, but I'm thinking, you know, once we, if, if we're approved, within a couple of days. From, from personal experience, I know that Saturday, this is from personal experience. Saturday, Jefferson County got their regional center opened up. They did 10 tests, like trial runs on Saturday with the referral process. And then I think Monday, I think they're set up to do 150 infusions today. And we sent people from here yesterday. We got, we sent people yesterday. So I mean, I know that, that it doesn't take long to get it set up and get it going.
Okay. Ron.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. Just to kind of, to reiterate what Mary Beth said, so I've got another conference call with the SOC this morning, State Operations Center, to discuss our regional infusion center. They're trying to see if we can get that pushed through, and I should have an answer probably by this afternoon on that. If it does get approved, like Mary Beth said, probably two to three days, it's basically, they send a team in to set up McLeod Park for us and provide us with the Regeneron and some of the other supplies. You're gonna need to do that. And they're working on resources for personnel to help us with staffing as well. And but, giving an example, Montgomery County put in their request on Thursday of last week, and theirs was up and running by Sunday. So once it gets approved from the state, it's up and running pretty quick. And the purpose of us asking for that was to give our residents that have less access to travel as some of us access to Bay, have a local site to be able to go to. Because at the time, before the other regional infusion centers opened, the waits in St. Elizabeth's and some of the other places were 10 to 12 days, which already puts you outside the window. So the state's making a pretty big push on trying to get as many regional infusion centers set up as they can. So we're working that process and should have an answer hopefully by today, if not tomorrow. So as soon as I get that, I'll make sure I get the information to Lauren and Mary Beth and the judge so they can push it out to everybody.
But Ron, you might have said it and I missed it. What, what's the window for getting infusion?
To be COVID-positive within 10 days. There's some other criteria as well. You can't be on, you can't be on oxygen. You can't be on oxygen. You can't have a pulse ox at days below the mid-90s without getting into a bunch of other details, but there's.
That's fine.
It's pretty much for those patients that are on the cusp of maybe getting sick and needing to go in the hospital. Those are the ones you target because it basically is keeping them out of the hospital and keeping our hospitals open, so.
Yeah, well, that was my question, mainly the, within the first 10 days. So they'd be, they'd be limiting the amount of doses they send us, or how will they prioritize them?
So that's, that's one of the reasons we're having the conference call this afternoon. They're trying to figure out what our target is based off of our current census, our current COVID numbers. So once I get the call set up, I'm waiting, I was waiting on a, I just actually was just texting with somebody from TDM just now while Mary Beth was talking. So once they give me a time, I'll make sure Mary Beth and Kevin and all them are on that call with me as well because that's gonna be, that's gonna be based on our current COVID numbers, the hospital censuses, all that stuff is gonna be taken consideration. They just opened one in Montgomery County, at Fort Bend County, and then like I said, Jefferson County just opened theirs, so they're gonna be doing 150 a day. I think realistically for us in Chambers County, we're probably looking more of the 40 to 50 a day regimen at most if we're doing IV. If we're doing subQ, we can probably do a little bit more too, because you can do it both ways. So it's just a little bit more planning needs to be involved. Once the state gets some better numbers together, and I should have a better answer by then.
Our infection rate, we're still in the top five, Texas, Chambers County. I mean, we're number three, Mary Beth, and we still there?
We're still in the top 10 this morning. I think we're eight because we have, we still have 154 cases per 100,000 population. We've remained in that top 15, top 10, but I think we're number eight today, yes.
Hey, Ron.
Yes, sir.
Have you reached out to Kit yet to make sure we get a hold on McLeod Park?
No, so I have not because I want to make, before we start actually book it, I didn't want to call her and book it and then basically not need it and basically cancel out citizens that might have something planned, but I can reach out to her this afternoon.
All right, thanks. All right, Ron.
So Chambers County EMS, you saw the joint statement that me and the judge, Dr. Brown and Mary Beth put out this weekend, where that initially started from. So over the last probably month, it started for us mid-July, but it was manageable. You know, we went through court. You guys gave me access to hire some additional full-time medics to kind of help with that overfill. We are now at the point where we are staffing four ambulances every day and two responders to kind of give us access to keep additional trucks in this county. We're utilizing overtime and some other things to do that, the money that's already budgeted. So in the last seven days, our call volume is up by 112% as a Chambers County EMS. It's up roughly 92% across the board for Chambers County EMS, Mount Bellevue EMS, and Winnie EMS. Some of the things that we've done to assist us with that, besides additional staffing, is we started utilizing system status management.
Yes, it is.
So way that works is, you know, if all four Chambers County EMS trucks are on a call, Mount Bellevue shifts a truck over to Jenkins Road and I tend to cover. We do the same thing for them. If their trucks are on a call, we're shifting a truck over to cover their territory and to make sure we're kind of moving the trucks around to keep them more centrally located in case we have calls. I think we've been mutualizing each other much more this last two weeks than we ever have, as far as I can get road numbers back. I can't tell you, I think Winnie's mutated us five or six times in the last week, which hardly ever happens because they usually have their own trucks. We've mutated them about three times. We've mutated Mount Bellevue and the city of Baytown. They've mutated us as well. Friday was kind of our peak, where it got really bad, which is where the joint statement come from. So at one point Friday night, about 7:00, 7:30-ish, we had absolutely no camp, no, we had not a single ambulance in Chambers County. We had no ambulances in Jefferson County and no ambulances in Harden County to provide 911 response in a three-county territory. And that was because of the extreme hospital wait times. During that time, there was 17 ambulances in St. Elizabeth's. I think there was 14 at Baptist, and there was 12 at St. Vincent and Methodist Hospital. They were all in the hallway waiting. We ended up shifting a medic over, a supervisor over, and sat with three patients on the wall for about four and a half, five hours that night. I sat with a patient the other day, so did Winnie. Sat with a patient for six and a half hours in the ER. The patient got x-rays, prescriptions, medications, all on the ambulance stretcher, and were discharged off the ambulance stretcher into the waiting room to wait for a ride home six and a half hours later. So that's how inundated the healthcare system is right now. So we're doing our best to combat it. If we need to license another truck through the state, that's something that we can look at. I don't think we're at that point yet. Mount Bellevue's got up their staff, Winnie's up their staff, we've upped ours. So we're, we're maintaining as best as we can right now and trying to give the medics as much of a break as possible. And we've got kind of a modified on-call schedule for all intents purposes, where I have additional people to come in if need be. Between myself and Danny, your office people, I think I worked 72 hours on the box last week, and he worked about the same, just to make sure we had those extra ambulances in service to run those calls. And so it's just been a little, little taxing for the medics, a little taxing for the entire region. And this is affecting not just Chambers County, it's affecting everybody around us as well. They're all having the same problem. So we put together a policy that was myself and Winnie in Mount Bellevue. The medical directors are all good with it. We talked about with Dr. Brown and Mary Beth and some of the other counterparts the other night. We're utilizing a different questionnaire. If it's a non-emergent call, for all intents purposes, somebody who maybe has a low fever with COVID-19 and not really many other symptoms, we're gonna start sending the medics on the squads to do an evaluation. We also have a contract we got set up. We should have that up and running by tomorrow. We'll actually be able to do telehealth visits from the patient's home so they can do a telehealth visit with an emergency physician. Can I talk to them? And we're basically gonna try and convince them not to go to the hospital because there's not any beds for them right now anyway. So if we can help them self-manage at the house, that's the goal. We're also doing follow-up. We've already done five or six of them yesterday. I've got a couple more scheduled for today. Where myself, Danny, and the supervisors are actually going back out to the patient's house the next day, doing reassessments on vital signs, just double checking on them, make sure they don't need anything else, and doing whatever we can to try and have them self-treat at the house versus going to sit at a hospital and then us possibly sitting with them for six or seven hours. Our current turnaround time, which is usually about an hour and 45 minutes, is now at five hours and 12 minutes. So if, and if somebody calls 911, the ambulance is pretty much out of service for five hours. That's been the average for the last seven to eight days. So that's kind of the plans we put in place. And kind of what we're doing to try and combat the surge of COVID and make sure that, that the citizens, you know, that are, they're counting on us have an ambulance if they call one.
Hey, Ron, say those wait times again, so make sure everybody called them.
So the average, the seven-day average right now for turnaround time is five hours and 14 minutes. So from when the 911 call comes in till the truck is cleared and back in the county is about five hours and 14 minutes is the average.
And normally it's an hour and what?
Or it's normally it's an hour and 47 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Ron.
Yes, sir.
Now, those people know, I mean, a lot of our overtime stuff like that, some, that's, some is refundable, right? So we'll be getting paid.
So actually, all of our overtime right now is 100% refundable through COVID, so it's all being charged to COVID.
So then in September.
It's in the September, yes, sir. And, and also, Mary Beth and Ron, how, how far out or do you guess, I know it's a guesstimation, are we at our peak to, we might see a break on this here?
You know, I've been on multiple conference calls, and Mary Beth will probably agree with me. The, I, I mean, everything's being pushed out to probably middle of September, but it's, I mean, it's really a rough guess. I mean, I, it's hard for me to judge because we've been dealing with it for about six weeks, and it was only supposed to last for about three. So, you know, that's kind of, I don't really know. Mary Beth might have better numbers on that than I do.
And I really don't. I think Dr. Brown kind of gave an update yesterday about wastewater plants in Houston that maybe there may be some plateau. But since schools, I know Houston schools just started yesterday, HISD just started back to school yesterday, that, you know, it's still kind of up in the air, that it may be another, you know, week or so before it peaks, plateaus, and then kind of drops off again. But I listened to Dr. Hellerstadt maybe talk about 10 days ago, the Commissioner DSHS and him say that he doesn't even want to try to, you know, give any estimation because then people really cling on to those. So I know you're asking just to try to know, but it's so hard to know right now, so.
Yeah, and it's, you know, with school starting, I mean, you know, it is what it is, but that makes it even tougher.
Okay, hospital numbers, just to give you guys an update on that, because I have a little bit better access to that through my EMTF stuff than Mary Beth does. So the current, currently, there's a capability of 1,612 beds in our RACR region. So the RACR region covers Rosoria, Chambers, Galveston, Harden, Jasper, Jefferson, Liberty, and Newton, which basically covers the hospitals in Beaumont, Jasper County, UTB, and Galveston, and the Philistines we have here. There's currently 1,579 beds that are taken up currently at the hospitals with access to 1,602. And there's only three ICU beds currently available in the entire region. So that kind of gives you an idea of how sick. The total census on the COVID is currently seven-day average is 37.6% that are COVID-related. And then the ICU side of it, COVID-related is 67% of the patients are ICU, ICU patients. So that's the current hospital numbers currently.
Hey, Ron.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ron, I mean, I got to ask this question. The treat and release stuff we're doing, are we working that through the state to get approval on that? A medical doctor, who, who's approving us to do through our EMS?
The medical director, and it was also discussed with the state with DSHS. So the state of Texas, the medical director has ultimate control of the policy using clinical guidelines. So Dr. Reven and Dr. Kavispar are the two that authorized that. Dr. Kavispar is the medical director in Beaumont, as well as Air Rescue in Lumberton. And we basically initiated the policy. Over the last two days, the policy's pretty much initiated throughout the entire region, not just.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted people to understand that we were just not doing that off of cuff. It's being, it's being approved by higher-up people than us.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Ron, I was gonna ask something similar to that, but what percentage, or do you have any idea of the amount of call volume that you're seeing? Or actually, non-emergency call volumes and people that are just panicking because they've got a fever and they're coughing or something due to COVID?
So on a normal basis, it's, it's, it's usually about 24 to 25% of our call volume that, that somebody's calling because they want us to come out and do an evaluation and give them some advice. Currently, it's about 42% of the calls where the patients basically have flu-like symptoms. Just like if you have the flu, you basically get ahold of a doctor and get you some prescriptions. So we're trying to give them access to do the same thing with the telehealth and those things versus going to sit in an ER for, you know, two or three days to see, to get the same results, just kind of a thought process. So the plan is never to refuse to transport somebody that wants to be transported. If they're adamant they want to go to the hospital, we're gonna take them to the hospital. We're just trying to give them a little bit more education and give them access to a physician to be able to assist them by staying at home so that we don't have to continue to inundate the hospitals, if that makes sense.
Well, I can say, you know, speaking from experience, you know, I called and tried to get that virtual appointment with my doctor, and it was going to be September before I could get it, so I started looking at alternatives, and there were none. It would have been, you know, the minimum. And there were none. It would have been, you know, the minimum was about three or four days out and that's checking every clinic and every doctor that, you know, I went through the Methodist. Program and then they started checking the clinics. So people are trying to get a virtual appointment now they can't. So I can understand that that does add to our call volume.
And next, that's why we're doing the telehealth contract. We got the contract signed yesterday. We're doing some testing on it this afternoon and tomorrow morning, just to make sure we don't have any issues with the wifi from the trucks. Um, and once that's, once that's signed off, then by tomorrow we'll actually be able to do telehealth from the field. Um, with the patient while they're at the house. So we'll actually be able to connect the, the contract is set up to where when we hit the button. The doc, there's an on-call doctor that answers within uh, within three minutes, is how the contract set up. So we should have access to a physician that can give orders, do prescriptions and all of that stuff while we're at the patient's house with them.
Hang on a minute, Greg. Okay, sorry, I had to take the phone call. Um, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mary Beth, Ron.
Thank you. You have a good day.
You too. Be careful out there, be safe. All right, it's um, ten oh four AM. We're going to recess out of regular session of Commissioners Court. And go to, go into public hearing on one point two. Uh, the proposed twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two county budget. And then on five point five, uh, regarding Texas Baytown Grand Parkway LLC tax abatement. And five seven regarding TGSCP six-three-six-three reinvestment zone. And this time we will go into public hearing. I'm gonna get Aaron in here to go over the budget, proposed budget. Let BJ in also.
Morning, everybody. So I sent you on email for the um, summary this morning. Here you go, you can pull this up. And I did put this on. I'm getting IT, it puts on the, on the county website for everyone to look at, since it wasn't on the um, on the agenda. But this, so this is the public hearing, something we have to do for the budget process. I'm just gonna kind of quickly go through it. If you have questions, just let me know. Um. So on the, on the first slide, you see the certified values. Currently, our certified values for twenty twenty-one is eleven. Eleven billion dollars, which is about uh, five hundred and fifty-eight million dollar loss from last year. Uh, mostly industry. Our current tax, uh, our value breakout is sixty-five percent comes from industry. Thirty-five percent comes from um, from uh, local industry, oh, well, you know, homes and things like that. A little mail sign note from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty-one, industry increased by seventy-eight percent. Uh, local increased by a hundred and thirty-three percent, which is a total of ninety-four percent increase from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty-one, which I thought was kind of, kind of neat. Uh, the next slide, you see the tax rates. Um, currently our twenty-twenty tax rate is point five three nine four nine zero. Uh, our um, no new revenue rate, which is the old effective tax rate is at point six zero. Our voter approval rate, which is the old rollback rate is point six two. But we're looking at a, uh, we're going to propose a tax rate of our twenty-twenty tax rate, which is below the effective and. The voter approval rate at point five three nine four nine zero. So if you see on that third slide, you can kind of see the breakout on the left. Portion right here, on the side right here. You can see the, the, the tax collected. And we're looking at collecting about three point four million dollars less in the road and bridge and the general fund. Uh, we do have an increase in INS for an increase of two point four million because we know we did some more debt this year. So that, that's our proposed tax rate for next court. We'll put the next court for the tax rate process to get that going. On the next slide, you can see the debt, you know, for twenty twenty, for twenty twenty-two, we're gonna have a, have a, have a hundred and twenty-one million dollars in debt. We're gonna pay that, pay nine point one million dollars. Um. And you can see how the stru- how it's structured, where if you, the blue columns are what's, is the debt, the green line is, you know, how much we're, we're gonna pay. So. You know, in twenty twenty-four, it levels off pretty good until uh, twenty thirty-one and it just keeps dropping.
Hey, Aaron.
Yes, sir.
It, it's probably more trouble than it's worth right now, but. Was there no way that you could get Austin and put these on the screen so everybody could see it?
You've got the PDF or?
Yeah, I do. It will just.
And do you have it like where you can email it in real quick or something?
I think I can. Yeah, give me two seconds here.
Or if you got it pulled up on your end, you can just do a screen share.
Start opening up.
Just forward that to me real quick.
I was getting it.
All right, everybody, one second. All right, uh, can everybody see that?
Yeah, thumbs up.
Okay, uh, particular slide you want me to go to?
Go to four, that's where I'm at now. Can you do like the F five presentation?
Is that showing?
Yeah, that's perfect. Yep. Yeah, you can see the, to the blue is our total debt and the green line shows will pay off every year. Okay, next slide. So those are the revenue summary for the general road and bridge and the enterprise funds, which is airport, solid ways. Golf course and the school acquisition tax. Uh, you can see most of the revenue comes from taxes at seventy-four percent. Uh, three ones about fifteen percent. And everything else is pretty, really small, fees and fines, you know, operating revenue. Um, those aren't really playing a big factor. Okay, next one. Uh, this is the general fund revenue separated. Taxes are seventy-two percent. Three one payments, twenty-one percent and then fees and fines, interest, you know, nothing too crazy here. Okay. Uh, road and bridge revenue, same thing, taxes, seventy-seven, seventy-seven percent. Um. So we did since fourteen, uh, plan on being done this year, we did add forty-nine revenue coming in. For red and bridge and that's about thirteen percent of their, their revenue there. So that's the expense summary with uh, you know, general fund, road and bridge, uh, the enterprise funds, INS. Everything there. So you can see that law enforcement's at twenty-two percent of the county budget. Uh, our debts, twelve percent of the county budget, road, sixteen percent, general government's, pretty, the bigger one, seventeen percent. Uh, which is like uh, Commissioners Court on the departmental, um, maintenance, um, elections. IT, communications, that kind of stuff there. Um, so that's kind of the breakout for the entire county budget. Okay, next page. Uh, so these are the current capital expenditures that it's budgeted right now. Um, y'all can look at that whenever you get a chance. You can see where I marked it out, um, like for landfill, that, that's going to be art money there, election, that's a grant that we're going to get. Um, next page, that's going to be more capital on the next page. Look at that, so about seven million dollar capital for twenty twenty-two. Okay, next page. Uh, that's a personnel list there. You can see on the left, that's what's currently budgeted for. On the right, what's been kind of cut so far. Um. Current personnel is going to cost about eight sixty-seven. That includes the benefits and salaries. Okay, next page. Current, uh, we're still kind of working on this right now, but the budget is at three and a half percent across the board. We're working on the CBA. We're right, right now in the negotiation, so we're still, we're getting close to that, I think. Uh, currently this salary adjustment, see all made, it's about a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars uh, of salary adjustments. Uh, next page. That's our current health service fund breakout. You can see revenue is about nine, nine point seven million dollars. Um, I'm still working on, I gotta clarify with Ron about some EMS uh, numbers, but uh, that's kind of the breakout. So salaries, that's going to be like. Uh, nurse practitioner, that's going to be like, I'm in a health deputies, couple of dispatchers, um, the animal control service guys. That's going to be our wellness program. Um, and then all the benefits of that. UC Wick, that's what we contribute to Wick from the O nine one fund. They have a grant, grant is to pay for everything, so we have to move some money to cover all of our expenses. Um, and then I have, you know, y'all agreed to the hospital uh, district getting seven fifty, so that's going to be budgeted in there. There's going to be a cash transfer budgeted and EMS transfer budgeted. Uh, just haven't figured that out just yet. Okay, next page. Hotel motel, uh, revenues at five eighty. Uh, you can see part, uh, so the cap, uh, the donation, I wouldn't have budgeted the donation for the AMDD donation for one fifty. If you look on the capital, the capital is going to be the, the, the three hundred for the whole thing because we're going to contribute one fifty. Plus some column, uh, park projects for the road and I think the um. Uh, there was something else that went along with that too. And then um, the promotional uh, money, that's this money that we uh, think you buy for the county. Like mugs, little things that we give away, uh, advertising, that's the. The money that we use for giving to the festivals. Uh, and then salary, there's a little part-time person that helps with the historical stuff. And then the remaining, I didn't really have a, roll, anything else to budget for, so I wouldn't have just put the rest of the funds in the parks. Uh, for y'all to kind of figure out what y'all want to do for, for that. And I think the next page is empty, so.
Yeah, I know we had discussed about pushing some of that to Commissioner Collins' precinct over there. I'm gonna hop on and, and um, or we still seventy-one percent industry and, and the rest, um.
Oh, no, that changed. If you look on the first slide there, yeah, we're at sixty-five percent in industry, thirty-five percent. Um, local, so that, that has changed.
Local.
Yeah, locals like homes and I think in businesses and industries like the, the big stuff. And so, and you can look on the, on the graph here, you know. For twenty-one, local went up nine point six percent. And it's still going up. And industry went down eleven percent, um, mostly from the, the.
Inventory.
Inventory, yeah.
Yeah, that was hopefully a one-time deal due to the inventory and the low gas rates at the same time.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully.
Yeah. Uh, I think that's it. Unless y'all have any questions for me.
BJ, yeah, he's in. All right, so we're still in the public hearing. Um, we'll go to Big Judge Adams. BJ's coming in, um.
Yeah, he's there, he's audio on.
Uh, five point five, public hearing. Sex is Baytown Grand Parkway LLC tax abatement agreement. BJ, good morning.
Morning Judge Commissioners. Um, this is a public hearing that's uh. Being conducted to get comment, uh, commentary on the. Tax abatement agreement between the county and Baytown Grand Parkway LLC. Uh, county approved the application on June eighth and established reinvestment zone July thirteenth. By way of reminder, this is a project, uh, two hundred and eighty-one thousand square foot refrigerated warehouse facility. Uh, in the Cedarport industrial park.
All right, we had no public comments, anything from the Commissioners. So BJ, go ahead with five point seven, public hearing on the reinvestment zone, TGSCP sixty-three-six-three.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, um, this is a. Public hearing to establish the reinvestment zone for TGSCP six-three-six-three LLC. It's a project that's going to accommodate a one point two million square foot um, warehouse in Cedarport industrial park.
Any questions, comments? Hear none. I am receiving none uh, from the public. We will adjourn out of the public hearing. At ten nineteen AM, go back into regular session of Commissioners Court. Five point six, discuss, consider the Texas Baytown Grand Parkway LLC tax abatement agreement, BJ.
Thank you, Judge. The, this is the agreement that was approved by the court and presented for approval.
I had a duty virtual hearings here. Uh, I'm looking for approval. Motion back to Mr. Combs. Second, begging back to Mr. Tass, any questions, those in favor?
Hi.
Posed, motion carries, five point eight, discuss, consider order designating TGSCP six-three. Six-three reinvestment zone, BJ.
Thank you, Judge. This is the order that would designate the uh, they create the TGSCP six-three-six-three LLC twenty twenty-one reinvestment zone. Uh, TGSC three has applied and uh, for, for the tax payment appropriately and published notices if required. Uh, this action would um, establish the seventy-three acre reinvestment zone to move forward with tax abatement um, process.
BJ, actually, I do have a question on that, but unfortunately I'm trying to shuffle between computers here and I had my agenda packet open on the other computer and. Smear another, posted. But one thing, uh, on this one. There was uh, some number of jobs that was stated on it. And it contradicted each other in one place. It said, let me see if I can find it. I think so, page one forty-seven.
Go ahead.
Hey BJ, I know Commissioner Combs and, and we discussed it here a couple of courts ago. We setting any minimums on our reinvestment zones on the amount of inventory or. Inventory on any of them at a, at a minimum?
Uh, we had, there hasn't been anything established as yet, uh, Commissioner. I think Rick, we are going to be moving forward to recommendations for review by the court, uh, once the chapter three twelve, uh. Um, we, the tax abatement guidelines are adopted every two years. And so recommendations are going to be made. Um, thus far, there have been um, requirements that have been established on a case-by-case basis and currently the, I think the. Um, project you're mentioning is for the Hunt Southwest building to have a respective tenant. And the expectation was, is that the, the court would um. Approve the amended, amend, the, the recommended amendment, uh, contingent upon certain inventory levels and job creation. And, and we're still working with Hunt Southwest and that. They're working with their tenant to come back to the court or to establish it.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, BJ, my, my apologies. That was actually on the uh, one that we just approved for the uh, coal storage building. And. It, it would have been for the previous agenda item. I, I guess I had it, uh, was thinking it's the other one. But it shows, it says at least five permanent employees and then it goes back and says that they're. Uh, going to have twelve employees out of Chambers County, you know, trying to get them out of Chambers County. So I was just curious if we could get some clarification on how many permanent employees that they were trying to get. Uh, would, would be uh, employing permanent employees.
uh, uh, would, would be, uh, employing permanent employees, and also what their inventory was, and that was, I apologize, that should have been on the previous agenda item.
Yes, Commissioner, the, the, uh, this is a project that, again, cold storage projects are somewhat unique in that the, the basic footprint for, for the building includes, uh, refrigerated systems and the like, and, uh, that are somewhat generic, is to allow for, the tenant to plug in their refrigerating regime. And so, uh, the five jobs that are noted, um, are, apply to Texas Baytown Grand Parkway. And the application references a tenant that will, make an additional ten million dollars in capital investment and create at least thirty-five jobs. So that twelve targets associated with the teneting of the, uh, of the building. And so the tenant is going to present an application for tax abatement, uh, subsequent to the completion of the building. So that's where that, yeah, but Texas Grand Parkway is expected to at least, you know, create the five jobs, and then twelve, uh, as well during, because they have, will essentially have a cold storage project. And so, uh, in preparation for teneting the build.
All right, thank, thank you, sir.
All right. Anything else on five point eight? Not on most.
So moved judge.
Second. Motion back to Mr. Tass, two seconds.
Hammond.
Good morning, you woke up. All right, again, motion in the second. Any other questions here? None? Those in favor? Uh, pose.
Right.
She carries. BJ, five point nine, discuss, consider public hearing on October twelfth, twenty twenty-one regarding the TGSCP six three six three LLC, twenty twenty-one tax abatement agreement.
Thank you Judge, what's required is a thirty-day minimal notice, uh, to the public to, uh, for commentary, uh, on the approval of the tax abatement between the county and TGSCP six three six three LLC. And so the, the request is to place it on the agenda for the October twelfth, um, court.
Entertained most. Move to. Motion back to Mr. Hammond, second back to Mr. Combs. Uh, to approve, a ten o'clock, eight AM, public hearing on the TGSCP six three six three. Questions? Those in favor? Uh, those, motion carries five, ten, discussing, consider Chambers County foreign trade zone policy, BJ.
Thank you Judge, like, mistress, back in, uh, July of twenty sixteen, uh, the court accepted its draft of, of the Chambers County foreign trade zone policy. Uh, the elements of which have been used, um, for presentation or requests were letters of non-objection for foreign trade zones, uh, designations for FDC one seventy-one. And the sentiment at that time was to develop a better understanding as to the real use of foreign trade zones. Uh, typically, foreign trade zones designations were used primarily as a marketing tool, you know, to, as a, to incentivize potential development. Uh, in, since that time, there've been substantial foreign trade zone activity in Chambers County. Uh, all the other taxing entities have entered into paying the little taxes agreements, the county has not. However, the situations are arising where, uh, the county has incentivized, uh, projects, uh, vis a vis, uh, and tax abatements, but, uh, then, uh, you know, applicants have applied for foreign trades, uh, which could have an impact. And so, um, what you have before you is the draft language that was presented to the court back in twenty sixteen, and the recommendation is that the court entertain, um, uh, changes, if you will, that would include, um, the payment in lieu of taxes for foreign trade zone, uh, qualified inventory. And so if the court takes action today to, to accept that recommendation, uh, we will work with the court to present, uh, finalized policy and, and, uh, pilot agreements for future foreign trade zone designations, uh, in exchange for the letters of non-objection that are required for FTC designation.
BJ, but you do not have any of that language. This, what before today is exactly what was, uh, proposed, or, uh, I guess actually adopted back in two thousand and sixteen?
Yes, that's correct, Commissioner. So what's required, what's requested is that court, um, state recommendation that the request that, uh, to establish policy to, um, accept payment in lieu of taxes agreements for foreign trade zone designation.
Because I know, I believe when we, you know, when we met with the appraisal district and looked at it, that, you know, we discussed then that, we really want to look into this closer, so I will definitely make a motion that we revisit this and look at payment in lieu of taxes.
Second. Motion back to Commissioner Combs, second back to Commissioner Gore. Any other questions, comments? Hear none, those in favor? Uh, pose, motion carries, BJ, I think we, you're done.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you BJ.
Take care.
Thanks BJ.
All right, it's ten twenty-nine, let's take five minutes, let's take six minutes, come back at ten thirty-five AM. My lips. Okay, can you hear me now? Court will come to order after recess is ten forty-two AM. Uh, will you let Terry Brown in, please? We're going to one five, discuss, consider approving the twenty twenty-two, United Healthcare Retiree Medical Benefits Plan, Terry Brown, and then we also have a supplemental agenda item. Um, that I don't actually have, I have to give more in, but Terry, good morning. You're muted, Terry.
There you go, how's that?
That's much better. Okay, we're on, uh, one point. Oh, I'm lost here, one point. I just read it.
You said.
One point five, yes. United Healthcare Retiree Medical Benefits Plan, Terry, I turned it over to you.
Okay, uh, well, it's good to be with y'all, uh, sorry it's not in person. Uh, I kind of felt like I was in Zoom purgatory here for a little while, waiting on this, so, uh, I'll, uh, I'll be as brief as, as you all would like, but, uh, I know that you have received, uh, the renewal letter, uh, and your, uh, rate package from, from TAC for, uh, for the upcoming year. And as you, as you saw and as I discussed, of course, the COVID claims were a little bit, uh, higher than anyone, uh, anticipated. We actually thought, uh, last year that the claims might be go, going down because folks were staying home and, uh, not having as much, uh, surgeries and elective things done, but, uh, didn't quite work that way. As you saw, the, the pool, uh, is gonna end up taking about a seven point three percent overall increase. And our claims last year, uh, were higher than we typically have seen, over ninety-five percent loss ratio, uh, in our own plan last year. Uh, TAC has taken a seven point three percent pool, uh, increase, but because of our size and because of our tenure, uh, as well with, uh, with the, uh, benefit pool, we're only gonna get, uh, about a four and a half percent, uh, increase this year, uh, on the medical and about two point nine on the dental. Uh, if y'all recall, last year, uh, we actually received a negative three, uh, a three percent reduction, uh, in our program last year and a negative one point two on the dental, so, we actually took a nice decrease last year, and, uh, in addition to that, we also received, um, a, a pool refund, uh, a distribution, a rebate, basically, of two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars that went back to us, uh, because of that. So, uh, this year, because of the, the, the claims, uh, overall, we are gonna take, uh, a little bit of an increase, so, in the last two years, you could say we're basically a, almost flat, between what we took as a decrease last year and, uh, and then the increase this year. Uh, I did check with them, and even though the, um, the pool rebates have not been figured as yet, I've asked them to give us an estimate, and they are also estimating, we are gonna get about a hundred thousand dollar refund. Uh, that, that'll be finalized, uh, next month, but, we will be getting something in that, uh, in that neighborhood. So, um, the hundred thousand, I just got, I just got that from, from them yesterday. Uh, in addition, uh, as you know, uh, there are two hundred and twenty-eight, uh, members of this pool, um, over forty-seven thousand members. So that's, that's really helped, uh, our rates very much over the years, and it's a good place for us to be. Uh, in addition to that, they are gonna pay, if you remember the, uh, what they call the PCORI fees, P C O R I, which was the Patient Centered Outcome Research Institute set up by the, uh, by the Affordable Care Act, uh, which cost us tens of, tens of thousands of dollars, um, previously. Those were supposed to expire in two thousand and nineteen, but they extended them again, naturally. You know, Reagan said the only thing that had eternal life was a federal agency. And, uh, it's, it's gonna continue, but, but TAC is gonna pay that, uh, out of our surplus. Uh, and they will do all the filings for the, the ten ninety-four and ten ninety-five reports as well, so we don't have to, uh, to do any of that. So, uh, you know, again, I'll keep this as, as brief as you'd like, but I'm gonna recommend that we accept, uh, the four and a half percent, uh, and the two point nine on the dental, uh, and re- renew with TAC for this year. Uh, keeping in mind, we've got the hundred thousand dollar refund. Uh, you, I, I'm sure you saw that there were alternatives, if you wanted to change benefits, uh, at all on the plan, uh, you could get it down to, to about a one percent or even a, even a reduction, if you wanted to change benefits, and I, I, this court has not been, uh, really keen to do that in the past, so I'm gonna recommend that we renew as is and, uh, uh, go ahead at this point.
Okay, and we actually have two items. The supplemental is to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, TAC Blue Cross Blue Shield Medical and Dental Benefits. So I'll entertain a motion on that item. Motion back to Commissioner Tass, I saw his lips moving. So moved. Back to Mr. Gore.
That's correct.
I want to be sure I know which one we're voting on. Are we voting on?
We're voting on the supplemental, the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, TAC Blue Cross Blue Shield Medical and Dental Benefits. Okay, thank you.
That's my motion, Your Honor.
Okay, I got your motion in a second. Uh, any questions?
Yeah, hey, uh, Judge, and I, I spoke with you, and I know we had a meeting with, uh, Terry Brown, Mary Beth, and them about the, way that our insurance, and it may be all insurances across the board, but are, it's taking forever for our, employees to get MRIs and those stuff like that, and it is, when they need surgery, they're requiring months of, physical therapy and then injections and other stuff like that, before people can get in and get a surgery that they desperately need. Is that across the board on all insurances? I mean, is that just Blue Cross Blue Shield, or is it the current administration?
Well, I would say that, uh, the, the step therapy, they call it, which, uh, includes a, all sorts of, uh, therapeutics before you do surgery, as well as, uh, physical therapy often, uh, is, is something that's done by most insurance companies. We did, we did talk with, uh, with the representatives from TAC, Orlando was here, and, uh, did he get back with you, uh, Commissioner, on, uh, what they have found on that? I'd be glad to talk with him about it. Uh, we were trying to get them to speed that up, but the, this is, uh, basically falls under the cost containment sect, section of most, insurance plans these, these days, uh, trying to get something done that would be less expensive to the plan, uh, before scheduling surgery. So, uh, as, as I had mentioned, and I think in our meeting, that oftentimes a, a letter of medical necessity, from the doctor, uh, would, would allow a, a few of those steps to be skipped. Uh, but I'll, I'll follow up on that if, if you'd like, if you hadn't heard anything from Orlando, I certainly didn't, uh, but I'd be glad to look into that again for you.
Yeah, no, I ha- I haven't. I mean, I just want to make sure if, if it's across the board, that's fine. I just didn't want it to be a, a particular insurance company that was.
No, I, they, they all have these, uh, uh, you know, I've consulted for Conroe School District for years, uh, uh, you know, thousands, thirty thousand employees, not that many, ten thousand employees, uh, had them for thirty-five years. And the step therapy, uh, and cost containment measures in their plan were very similar. Now, if, I, I do need to find out, I, I do want to know if, if this is being drug out longer, than it needs to be, because it, it ought to be a, a fairly rapid, uh, progression to say, we want you to take these drugs. If those don't work, we want you to do this therapy, and then if that doesn't work, then they should be able to get the surgery scheduled. And if, if there's too many and too long a delay, then I, I would like to intervene on that and, uh, talk with them on, on your behalf.
Okay, I, I mean, I know Linda and, and Mary Beth and her staff over at, been a great job, but it's eating up a lot of their time, uh, where they could be helping other patients, and they're having to do all this, and it continuously gets kicked back, and it's taken some of months to get in, and I'd just like to see what we could do to help them and also, and release some of that off of our staff there, well, you know.
I, I'll check with Mary Beth.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Terry. All right, any other questions on that item? Hear none, those in favor? All right, uh, motion carries, now we're on one point five. The twenty twenty-two United Healthcare Retiree Medical Benefits Plan, Terry.
United Healthcare, and this is with, uh, with, with the TAC, is it not?
Uh, y- y- as far as I know, it is.
Yeah, right, it's not united. So, uh, tho- those were included in the, in the race as well, so I, I would say that.
Oh, they were included in what was approved?
Yeah.
So, actually, that item needs to be pulled, and I don't know how they got put on there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either. That's, that's not a.
Retirement medical.
Retirement medical is, is the, uh, Blue Cross plan with, with, uh, with TAC.
And it's all part of the plan we just.
Yeah, right, that was on the sa- on the sheet as well, in your packet. So your vote should have included that.
All right, thank you, Terry.
Okay. Thank you.
Be safe.
Good day.
Thank you, Terry.
Uh, excuse me. Ashley in there? Yeah, let her in, let's take care of the opioid. All right, Ashley, we are going to one point seven, discuss, consider joining the proposed opioid settlement.
Good morning Commissioners and Judge, how are y'all?
Good morning.
Good morning, Counselor.
Okay, so, um, as we all know, there's been a great opioid crisis, um, throughout the country for several years, um, so, uh, there has been a global opioid settlement, instead of each state or each county, um, going to find individual counsel to sue these big companies like Johnson and Johnson. Um, the Attorney General Ken Paxton has joined together the entire state, um, and each state is joining together. And they have come, um, up with a proposed settlement with companies like Johnson and Johnson. Um, and so there was a presentation, um, that you're all aware of, and they discussed, you know, um, us joining the settlement, um, so one point five billion dollars has been allocated to Texas, um, and I. And I don't remember exactly how much was allocated to Chambers County, but it was a significant amount. And we would get that payment over ten or twenty years, I believe. And all of that money goes to anything that's related to the opioid crisis that has affected us in the past, present or future in Chambers County. So I do think that it's a good idea that the county joins in opioid settlement. There's, it doesn't cost us anything to join. But we would be, you know, waiving our rights to bring our own litigation. We'd be joining in with the big settlement.
And I agree with that. Doctor here.
One hundred fifty thousand.
How much, Billy?
One hundred fifty thousand and some change.
Yeah. And they, didn't I hear him say there might be some more money coming?
Yes.
I think so. I believe so.
But that won't all be at one time.
Right.
I'll move for acceptance.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Gore. Any other questions? Motion carries. Thank you, Ashley.
Thank y'all. Have a great day. I'll be around if you need me.
All right.
It's one fifty three, one eighty eight.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
One point three, discuss consider post twenty twenty two electoral official salaries.
Aaron's gone. So now. Thank you, Beth. Good morning. So this is under the part of the process for the budget for next year. You can see we're giving every electoral official three and a half percent increase from twenty twenty one, just like other county employees. The only real exception is the constable. Y'all gave him an extra twenty five hundred, then plus three and a half percent. And that's included in this twenty twenty two. Nothing else changed. Oh, yes, two more things. You gave the county clerk an extra bit for her stipend and then district clerk with ten thousand for her stipend. And then we both got an extra ten thousand dollars in the stipends. And you can see why we have the stipends here for the county clerk, she does the election administration. And then the district clerk doing the jury, countywide jury coordination. And then just adjusted for longevity, which is additional one fifty.
I thought we did something on the sheriff also.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yep, yep, you're right. Thanks, Billy. Yeah, one twenty five for the sheriff. You see that for twenty two. So this is just proposed after, if y'all agree to it, we'll put in the paper, which brings getting that ready to go. Y'all adopt it on the fourteenth of September. I'll send out letters to everybody and then they have the five days to grieve.
Aaron, our district clerk, her request for, we did approve those?
Yeah, yes, sir. An extra ten thousand stipend for her extra duties issues that she's doing now.
Okay.
Yeah, so you can see that in the column here under.
Right.
Yeah, so y'all adopted on the, so proposed paper, put in the paper, then it gets adopted on the fourteenth. And then I'll send out letters that day, then they have five days to grieve. And they'll send that to the judge. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions there?
You need a motion, Judge?
I need a motion to prove the proposed.
So move, Your Honor.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Tice, second by Commissioner Hammond. Hear no questions? Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, one point four, discuss consider proposal from Integrative Results LLC for consulting services to create a ten year financial and debt service plan. It's something we discussed during budget and I think we're ready to move to get justice center. So we can figure out exactly when we can build a justice center and get moving forward without going upon taxes.
So move, Judge.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gore, second by Commissioner Tice. Any questions?
I did want to point out one thing. It's not just for the justice center. It would be
No.
income showing for the next ten years so that we can look at what we can afford and when we can afford it.
That's correct.
And you're right. It's not, I think the justice center pushing it, but there's a lot of other things.
Right, which is the first step in getting a ten years plan to get debt plan.
Absolutely.
Something we've been.
Facility plan, right. All right, I got a motion in a second. Any other questions, comments, those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. All right, let's go down to, would you let Bobby Hall and Cory in? Morning, Cory. Bobby, good morning again. All right, we're going to start with three point two, discuss consider change the road and bridge work schedule. I visited Bobby Hall yesterday and he refreshed my memory on why we went from five eights to four tens years ago when we did it. And so I asked him to be on to discuss that. Bobby, you're muted.
And I spoke with several of the county employees and they expressed the same thing that Bobby Hall did, Judge.
Okay, y'all hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I need a little history of my employment with Chambers County?
Go ahead.
All right, in ninety eight, Don and I got together and he was looking for an assistant engineer and I was working in Baytown with an engineering architect and surveying, managing all their surveying, because that's my specialty. And he said, look, I need assistant engineer. And I said, I'm available because I was tired of the drive and the long hours. Ha, I got long hours when I got over here anyway. Anyway, so I became assistant county engineer and then ended up handling a lot of the drainage, dish cleaning and things like that. We, Don and I both, at that time, I think at that time, with all the hands were actually clocking in at the Anawak yard and then loading in trucks or whatever pickups and driving to the different yards. Yard in Mont Belvieu and the yard in Winnie. And Don and I said, that won't work. And so we then had opened up the two yards, outline yards and a sideline and had had the equipment there. Now we kept all the road working equipment, the motor graders, reclaimers of things in the main yard in Anawak. And later on, we noticed that we were not getting productivity on an eight hour day. By the time everybody, you take fifty or twenty people clocking in at a clock, then loading their ice, getting ice, water, loading their trucks. Then by the time they got on the road, drove, we were losing some time and we worked from seven to three thirty with a thirty minute lunch hour. So he and I talked about it and came to the court and went to a ten hour day for the road bridge department. And productivity increased because once you open a road, you want to work on it. And we were not being successful in doing that on the eight hour days. Commissioner Hudson was kind of apprehensive mainly because there'd be no one around on Friday. Well, we assured him that, look, we're all twenty four sevens. If something came up, that my name was the first on the list, they called and I went to Foreman. And then we would take care of it and we did. And it was, it worked very well. So it has worked very well. I just don't feel that they could get the eight hours in. One thing that I've always concerned too about is that when there is a one day holiday in the week, the road bridge department works, they get the eight hours for the holiday, then they work three nines and a five. Well, you don't get a whole lot done in that five hours. And my question has been over the years is, you know, and a lot of other companies that do just the straight ten hours, when there's a holiday, they get ten hours and they don't worry about it. But we did, the court shows not to do that. But still, though, you get more productivity. There's better morale, I think. And you've got a bigger, it just works much better and it has proven to work much better, being at four tens. Any questions, guys?
No. Hi, Bobby. Appreciate it.
I'm always available, Commissioners, if you want to visit with me one on one or I can't visit with more than two of you at a time. And if you got COVID, I'd sure want to visit with you. So, but anyway, even though I've been vaccinated. And so, but anyway, just let me know. Like I say, my expertise is land surveying. But yet I have an engineering degree and engineering license, but I can't talk to engineers. And I talk to realtors and I talk to title companies. And that's my, that's my field. So I'm there for you, Commissioners, but if you don't have anything else, then I'm signing off.
All right. Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
You bet.
All right, Cory.
Thank you. Hello, Commissioners and Judge. I agree with Bobby in, you know, a lot of instances. So my history being with, you know, Tech Dot is that the engineering department generally runs the the five days a week because you get a lot more office stuff. But your road, road crews generally work the four ten schedule. I do agree with Bobby that, you know, once you start, you know, you have some of that routine stuff that happens daily. And then you also always have, you know, there's, I don't know, that's the one of the issues is, you know, what do you do with those? When you finish something right at the end of, you know, maybe of a day. And, you know, you've got that struggle. So the more opportunities you have for that, the more little wasted time you're going to end up with. So condensing that does help. Now, and I think it is a morale boost to have that the four tens. Like I said, we've, I've talked to a couple of Commissioners individually and I think, you know, we've got some guys that actually, you know, even do some work on the sides on the weekends to try to help boost their their salary from the, you know, kind of what they might get in the private sector to lower pay at the, you know, at the county. And so we're, that allows us to kind of give a benefit, you know, maybe working local or, you know, some people even driving in from other counties. But anyway, it's a benefit. And if we was to go to the five day, you're going to take that out. It's going to be a cut to their overall pay, not their county pay, but their overall pay that they're bringing in from doing extra work on the weekends. And unfortunately, I think those are some of our hardest workers, you know, that would take that hit. And I think that we potentially would lose some some key guys in doing that. Now, I'm not going to say that, you know, there's not maybe some, you know, I've heard that, you know, maybe there's, you know, you've seen some guys at times, you know, sitting on the side of the road. I think we need to investigate that and make sure that they're working diligently and that we don't have wasted hours, that they do see that this is a benefit and that, you know, it's, it's something that could be taken away by the court if, if it's not treated correctly. So I guess that's kind of my general thoughts. What's, what can I answer for y'all?
Just add that I'm one of the ones that Cory spoke with yesterday. And, you know, I spent most of my life running construction crews, construction companies, and I've tried four tens, five eights. Unfortunately, I most of the time worked six or seven or eight tens, but still a lot of overtime.
Right.
And it's a proven fact that productivity is not as good with four tens in construction work groups. Because in a ten hour day, you just don't get as much productivity per hour as you do in an eight hour work day. I understand exactly what Bobby's saying about gearing up and getting out on the jobs, having more hours on the job site. And I hear you on morale, you know, I, I, I don't disagree that, you know, people get used to having that three day weekend and they start doing other stuff. Our problem has been exactly what you said, Cory. It's just been that there's lots of incidents where people are taking advantage of it. And although they're working ten hour day or scheduled for ten hour day, their true work day is much, much less. You know, they're slow getting started in the mornings and early stopping in the afternoons. So, you know, I'm willing to give it a shot, but, you know, I know just from where I'm sitting, I do want to see that they're supervised better and productivity, you know, it doesn't have to be a slave driver, but we expect they're going to get paid for ten hours. We want ten hours worth of work.
Yeah, Commissioner, Judge, Cory, I want to add in on top of where Billy left off. I, I, I understand what Bobby was saying. It makes sense in a perfect world. But the quality is forty years in the construction industry, every company that I've associated with, they tried four tens. They went back to five eights. And the reason they went back to five eights, it's called T O T. A lot of them paid for outside consulting. It's called I'm on tools. It's not working. We're not getting the productivity. I watched it with my own eyes. I have followed it around. I have looked at it. And in the real world, it wouldn't work because you got to make profit. And I understand the four tens is perfect. We were getting after it and productivity was there. I would be all for this, but I don't think the taxpayers of Chambers Counties are getting their bang for their buck for four tens.
Yeah, but is the productivity going to be there when you go to eight? Hey, Judge, I mean, I, I mean.
I'd like to waive the two.
Hey, Cory?
Yes, sir.
Couple of questions in alternative to what everybody is saying here. One, how many days do we work on roads? I mean, we budget fifty thousand and I asked for us to budget a hundred thousand in overtime in road and bridge. And the reason I say it like this, if we're on five eights and we're working on a road, that day we could work a ten and pay them guys extra a couple of hours to get that road closed up. Because most of the time during the year, we're not, we're not doing roads. And if roads, if the deal.
Commissioner, that, that makes sense, but this is, this year is a prime example to tell you why four tens is kicking our butt.
I, I, I say, I say go to the five eight, I understand the five eight, but I'm saying when we're working on the road projects.
Yeah.
Need that extra time, we could pay them out of that overtime line.
Right. But what is, what is, what has happened this year is that twenty twenty one has been a very wet year in the construction industry. And reality is when it rains on Monday, Tuesday and you're getting nothing done, well, you give a little something done on Wednesday and Thursday. So you got two days. So you miss Friday because it rains Tuesday. It just puts us in a bad situation.
No, no, I understand that. I'm saying the days that, I mean, because I have a lot of rock roads. I mean, we could be maintaining grading rock roads all the time. And I've spoke with Cory about taking the drainage crew during the winter. They're not mowing, they're not doing anything else and put them on our cobert cleaner. And that particular crew cleans coberts all winter long. That could help us across the county. What I'm saying is if it's a consensus that we go with five eights, and we're building roads wherever across the county, we, we have the money available in the overtime line item so they can work a ten. But they're still working five eights, but that day they put in the ten hours and make a little overtime for what I'm saying. That's, that's all I'm offering to the group.
Well, I, I mean, I hear what y'all are saying and I, I mean, there's definitely some situations where, you know, you, you get rain Monday, Tuesday and it's wet and then it ends up your prettiest day of the week happens to be on Friday. That is frustrating. That does occur. Of course, there's also going to be times. It has, you're right. Yeah, you're right. I mean, there's, but there's going to be opportunities also where it works the opposite, where you're taking away those two hours throughout the week and then you get your rain on Friday. There is that possibility. And, you know, I do agree that there needs to, there needs to be, you know, the crews need to understand what they have here and that this can't be taken advantage of. I think is what I would ask is let's continue to evaluate this. And Brian's coming in, you know, should be starting next week. And let's, I would say, let's, you know, let's focus on, you know, meeting with crews, making sure that they're working diligently. And let's see if we can't change the. And let's see if we can't change the perception, uh, that's here. And so that if it fails, they know that it's on them of, of why this, you know, why this failed.
Well, Corey, it's frustrating, you know, I asked, uh, and I appreciate, uh, Road Bridge jumping on and doing a repair job in front of Falcon's Point. It was a simple repair job, the repair job's complete, but it's totally unacceptable. Judge, if you saw it, if any of my fellow commissioners saw it, y'all would say the same thing to you. And so they pulled off of Katie's Creek. They've been on Katie's Creek for three weeks and they've been in front of five houses. Three weeks, three, five houses ditches have been claimed.
All right. So I, I mean, one of the things Corey said that, that kind of struck me is the fact that some of our best employees, you know, depend on four 10s so they can have the, the weekend job also. So you know, I hate to say it's a punishment going to five eights, but it is for some of them. So you're going to punish those best employees as well as those others that aren't as productive. I, you know, it's
Well, and if there's, there is what I would say is if there's, if there's individuals that are not being productive, that are, you know, taking liberties, um, at slacking, I, I, and, and let me just say that I'm not sure that that's the case. I mean, I think, you know, we have, uh, I'm trying to get the guys focused on road work instead of the ditch cleaning because we don't have the double. You know, we, we've, we've made a decision to kind of not have the double dump trucks behind the ditch cleaning crew because we've got the ditch cleaning contract right now. So when, if you're doing ditch cleaning, they can fill up a truck pretty darn quickly. And then, you know, he has to go dump and you've got one truck that's going back and forth and you're going to grade all that's going to be sitting there for a little while, while he's waiting on a dump truck to come back. Now hopefully that dump truck's not making a size, you know, going somewhere else or, you know, whatever. He's making a quick turn and coming back. But those are the kind of things, if we've got an individual employee issue, like we've got one employee that's doing that, I would say, let's hold that, you know, let's find out where those are at. Let's hold that individual accountable and bring up the whole work product, but not punish the whole crew for, you know, one, one or two individuals.
I mean, we, we, I mean, in just my opinion, but we should all have two dump trucks behind a grade off. I mean, that, I mean, that's, that's a given. I mean, when one of them's dumping, the other can be loading and get on back. I mean, that's just productivity. We should not be sitting idle like that. That's the reason I was wishing to get another dump truck over here and we need, we're short. And I think we need to look at that. I think we need to look, I mean, our foremans can everywhere at one time. I think we need to look at on each crew having another guy kind of a step foreman there that pushes that crew. Works back to the foreman, a Joe or, or, or Brian, whoever, it's a chain of command. But I mean, there are steps we can take to improve and, and we, we just, we just need to do it because I mean, I agree with the other we are not getting, the taxpayers are not getting what they deserve from the crews right now. And, um, so that's something we need to look at and change. And I know you and I have discussed multiple things that we need to change material and other issues like that. So we, when we open these roads up, I mean, Dugod and Franzen and a lot of our roads, Wallerfield Liberty, a lot of roads across the county. We open them up, we, we come back in, we pack them and they sit there for weeks too. We get rain and potholes start popping in them. Well, we patch it, then we chip seal it without reworking it. And there we are, popo, the pothole just popped right out. I mean, we need to, we need better scheduling. And I mean, I mean, when our crews are sitting on the side of road because of a broke down piece of equipment, the guy in the shop up there needs to send out our mobile mechanic truck and get whatever it is, get it fixed. Because, I mean, we've got a whole crew down. Either that or we got to figure out something else for that crew to do, uh, during the day.
Yeah, I had something to what Judge said a while ago, you know, talking about, and Corey alluded to punishing the employees. I, I don't disagree. Probably some of our best employees might be the ones that's got weekend project or other jobs that they do utilizing Friday. I know I personally used to do that when I worked four 10s and that's how I got my first business started. But I do recall sometimes about a year or two ago, whenever we really needed some people working on a weekend on a Friday, you know, Bobby said a while ago, they're always there on Friday. We need them. And certain employees just did not want to work on a Friday because they had sideline jobs they're doing on the Friday. You know, I, I think if they do have sideline jobs, that this job needs to be their number one priority. If we call on the work, I, I truly don't like getting refused simply because they got something, another job to go to. And I agree with you.
Well, so yeah, I, I do agree with that. And, uh, basically they, they, we had that issue. Um, I think, uh, the key is not dropping that on them. You know, like the day or two before, you know, they have to acknowledge that, uh, Chambers County is their, is, is the number one job, but try to give them a little bit more leeway of when we're going to, uh, you know, work in the overtime schedule. Obviously, if we have a hurricane, we have some type of emergency situation, it's all hands on deck. But when we're trying to schedule something, some extra work, like what, uh, Commissioner Gore was talking about, uh, scheduling it like, okay, starting next Friday, we're going to start working on Fridays and we're going to work this for the next month until we get this knocked out.
You know, and I think, I, I hope, um, the Roden Bridge crews realize they are the face of Chambers County. I mean, that's who the people see is, is Roden Bridge crews out, um, working in front of their houses. I think we need to keep harping that too. I mean, I'd like to leave it like it is, like, uh, Corey recommended. And get Brian on board and revisit it, revisit it a couple of months or three months, first of the year.
Judge, I follow. That would be my recommendation.
Okay. I agree with Corey.
So I got a whole bunch of opinions about this. Lots of it's already been, been said.
Go ahead.
So I'm not going to repeat all of them. What, what I don't think we need to do right now is change anything because we've got a new guy coming on board. We need to get him in here and let him assess all our activities, everything we have going on. I mean, that's what we're paying this guy for specifically to come do that for us. So we need to let him come in there and do his job and figure out what we need. We've already proved without a doubt that farming out some of this work is way, way, way more productive than what we're going to get from our county guys, just the way the system is designed. You know, so I, I think making a move right now, uh, I agree with Mark, you know, you've got time on tools and you've got work scheduled. And those are two different things. Those aren't the same thing. So, uh, they have to be addressed differently. So I'm with Corey. I don't think we need to change anything. They need to let Brian get on board. You know, he needs, he needs to bring those recommendations to us instead of us bringing them to him.
I guess I'll bring out 15 of the top 25 companies in America that say four 10s are not effective and productive. I'm just telling you, I don't, I, I don't think, uh, I, I agree with Tommy. We, we, we bring our new road administrator in here and that's why we hired him. Uh, so let's let him evaluate and, uh, let's let him see what I've been seeing because what I've been, I'm certainly not pleased with.
Right. And Mark, I, I just, I'd ask y'all to just keep in mind that this is, we don't pay the same as the private sector that you came out of. And it is, there is a balance there. We, we've got to be competitive somehow or another, but they, they take jobs. They've, you know, they've, they've got to work, they've got to do their part too. So this is, let's, let's give them an opportunity and let's hold them accountable.
I agree.
All right. So we're going to pull. I just pull it, Judge. Yeah. Any other questions, any comments on it? Not, we're going to pull it.
Pull it.
All right. 3.1, discussing center presentation for high frequency radar installations at McCollum Park at Smith Point. Corey?
Uh, that was not my item.
It's got your name by.
Well, I know that, but I don't know where it came from.
I'm just saying.
Presenting that.
That's Parks.
I think Brad had a somebody making a presentation. Is Brad in the way? Yeah, go ahead and put, put him in, um.
That should be Kurt's project.
It could be Brad. It is a utility, so.
No, it's the high frequency radar is Kurt.
Oh, this is, uh, Chris Fuller from RAC. Are y'all hearing me?
We can hear you, uh.
Yes, thi- thi- this is my item, so.
Oh, this is your item 3.1?
Yes.
Okay. Good deal. There. So, uh,
Right. So if you mind, I, I have a short presentation. I can kind of describe the project to you if I can share my screen.
Yes, sir. You may.
Are you guys seeing my screen?
Yes, sir. We can see your screen. Uh, we see the YouTube right now.
Okay. Oh, I'm just, okay.
Here we go.
Seeing my presentation now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, just to give you a little background, this, this project is a coastal management plan, uh, project. It's a project of special merit that was funded by Texas General Land Office. Uh, just to give you a background, who I am, my name is, uh, Chris Fuller and I'm with Research Applied Technology Education Services. This is a, a 501(c)(3). Um, we have some equipment that we, uh, leveraged in the project with the University of Texas at El Paso and, uh, Lamar University with, working with Lee Hasselbach. So.
Chris, still there?
Yeah, I'm still here. I'm, I'm, I'm here myself delayed by about a minute, so it's making it difficult here.
I'm probably going to close your YouTube, Chris.
Okay. You just, just bear with me a second here.
That's fine.
Okay, am I still there?
Yes, sir. We can still hear you.
Okay, that, that now helps me. That, that was confusing me. So, all right. So I just want to kind of give you a little bit of background that this project and what HF radar is and what we're asking. So, um, okay, so what is HF radar? Uh, HF radar, it, it basically, frequency radar. Uh, this system that's used to map surface currents out in the ocean.
Hey Chris, all we can see is your email right now.
I'm sorry.
Did, did you want us to read your email for you?
No, there's nothing personal in it, but, uh,
I'm kidding.
Okay.
There you go.
All right. Okay, just, just giving you background of what the radars are. So again, you got these radars to measure surface currents and basically we, we, we set up a station. It, it's a radio station that we have to set up. Uh, takes multiple locations to, to, to cover an area. So basically it's what you're looking at here. This is a system I had set up on Corpus Christi Bay about 15 years ago. Uh, so we set one up at North Beach and we set another one up at A and M Corpus Christi. And so these systems can get currents along a, 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 a radio line, but it takes two systems to get total, total coverage to give you a, a total resolved vector. So that's what we're trying to do is set up multiple stations along Galveston to map these surface currents. Again, the, these systems are in place right now, uh, on the Texas coast, th- th- there is a, a network that's operated by GURG out of Texas A and M for the offshore currents. Uh, so in our project, we're bringing this technology to, to, to Galveston Bay and Sabine Lake. And this is to address some, some of the, the state's, uh, needs and interests in, in basically looking at, at oil spill, oil spill trajectories in like Galveston Bay and Sabine Lake. Uh, it's also, this data is also used to help develop, um, hydrodynamic models that the Corps of Engineers and Texas Water Development Board are, are working on right now to help their storm surge modeling. They need this data. If, if this data helps us develop better models. So basically this is a data collection, uh, uh, project. And our, our team members at, at UTEP are doing some modeling work. And my, our team members at Lamar University, they're kind of my boots on the ground, uh, support, uh, helpness locally. Uh, Lee Hasselbach, I think a lot of you guys know her. She, she's been, uh, instrumental in helping getting this, get this project going. So, uh, let me show you what I'm looking, looking at for, for Galveston Bay. So this is my network here at Galveston Bay. I'm, I'm looking at putting a station up at McCollum Park. Uh, and a second station in Chambers County at Smith Point, uh, down here. We have a third location that we're working on with the Corps of Engineers in Galveston County over on the Texas City Dyke at the, at the Moses Lake tide, tide gate. Uh, so basically with these three stations, I can, can, can basically get coverage over, uh, Trinity Bay. And then this, the, the central south portion of, of, uh, Galveston Bay. So that's, that's kind of what we're looking at. Just to give you an idea of what goes into these stations, I'm not sure if you guys had a chance to review the, uh, little project description that was sent out a, a, a week or so ago, uh, by Brad. But basically you're looking at, um, we, we have an enclosure. This would be a, a HAV, HVAC enclosure. Uh, we have a conduit running a, a coax to a transmit receive antenna. This is a picture of a transmit receive antenna. This is a system that, that, that's on Martha's Vineyard, actually. Um, and then our stuff would be housed in just a, just a normal NEMA enclosure, a, a climate controlled NEMA enclosure. And the idea being that we put this NEMA enclosure on, on, on a wooden platform that's erected on site. So, uh, again, is what I'm asking for is permission from, from the county to, to install at, 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 at McCollum Park. Uh, and basically we went out there with, with, uh, Brad Wilber, uh, to, to look at a few places. Uh, I think this McCollum Park would be an ideal location, uh, it's kind of, it's kind of a small here on my screen, but we think we could put the enclosure up here by the, purity residence and run a coax a- a- along the tree line, uh, next to the, to the, uh, sidewalk there out to the end of the bulkhead where I planned to put an antenna. Uh, one thing that we would need to do is connect to the power. There is a power meter back here behind the residence. Uh, hopefully we could tie into your meter. If we needed to, we could also put our own meter out there, but, but, but if the county could, could, could let us, um, tie into their power, that, that would be a great help for this project. Um, the second location is, uh, James Robbins Park. Uh, again, um, there is power there. I would have to arrange with the, I believe it's energy is out there, um, to, 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 to get a meter pole put in, uh, and then to, to power my station. Um, put the enclosures somewhere on, in this vicinity and then run my antenna out toward the, the shore. Uh, the idea of being here at this location is to stay out of the way of the boat traffic, the boat ramp traffic. Uh, and also I had to stay away from, uh, thi- this parcel. And I'm not sure if you can see it in this picture here, there is a, 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 a concrete barricade setup, uh, that kind of separates the, the county property at the park from, uh, uh, the, this privately owned property. I can't remember the landowner here, but I, I need to stay on, uh, the, 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 the county property. Again, that this is a, a, a low lying area. It's subject to inundation. Um, speaking with the county, the one thing I would ask from the county, if they allow us to be out there is to, to, just to work with, with communication, uh, to make sure we, we know when it's safe to go out there, especially in the event of a, of, of a forecasted tropical storm where we might need to, to evacuate our high value equipment. But again, what we're asking for is, is permission from, from the county. Uh, I'm not sure what that permission would be in the form of, maybe a memorandum of understanding, uh, to, to, to put this equipment in. Uh, and then your cooperation. So, uh, that, that's kind of what our ask is. And that I, I can leave it at that and take any questions you might have now.
Hey Judge?
Yes, sir.
Is this something that the sheriff department might be able to utilize if overturn boat and look?
Is this something that the Sheriff's Department might be able to utilize if overturning boat and looking for someone in the water to look, see which way the tide or current is going to be able to track them? Would they have access to this?
Yes, this, this data will be available to the NDBC. In fact, that is one of the applications of it. It's often for search and rescue operations. Coast Guard uses this stuff. This, this system, if you go to the NDBC website right now, you can go to their HF radar site and see this. Basically, the entire coast of the United States, Alaska included, maybe not Hawaii. I think there's some in Hawaii, but the East Coast and West Coast for sure. There's a, there's a pretty big gap to the, to the, to the east of you there, too. But, but in Louisiana, that's a tough shoreline to cover. But yeah, that's, that's one of the applications of this stuff, of, of this, this system.
Yeah, personally, I'm glad you're coming to Chambers County and Galveston Bay and Trinity Bay. We, I think it'll be a great asset for everyone. But I do have a question about your power usage. I was trying to get that a couple of weeks ago. I've, I've been following this. I didn't get to meet with you when you came out in McCollum Park because I was out of town, but what, exactly what is your power usage that you expect?
I, I've been working on that, so I, I, I think my system, you know, my main draw is going to be that HVAC system, so I'm looking at about forty-eight kilowatt hours a day. That, that's going to be a summertime usage. Thank you, sir.
So the locations, Billy, have you seen that? Mark?
Yes. Yes, I've, I've seen it, and I'm, I'm person, you know, I'm fine with it. I, you know, like I say, quite frankly, I'm glad to see him coming. I do think I, I agree with Commissioner Gore that, you know, this is something that Sheriff's Department can use. You know, I think it's just going to be good to put out over the bay. There have been several incidents. We could have used this.
Yeah, it's home with me. I lost my father, my grandfather, and my uncle in a an event where they were being hunted far, so it's kind of bringing back some memories for me, so. Here's a good thing. I'm, I'm really far, your honor.
So I'm trying to figure out the, you did informal requests and with specific locations, and it's an, it'd be a contract. What do you?
Looked over any of this?
I, I'm sorry. I didn't catch the question.
All right, question is, Chris. Are you doing formal contracts with other counties? I mean.
Well, it, it just depends on, on, on the location. The, the station at, that we're looking at on Moses Lake Tide Gate, that, that's, that's a kind of a complicated position because, because, because the tide gate structure is, is owned by the county. The land where the antenna goes is going to be privately owned, and then you've got the US Corps of Engineers there, too, that also has a right-of-way. We have to coordinate with all those entities and, and get permissions to, to, to put that in. So yes, we would be entering into agreements with each of those entities before we can, can, can put anything in the ground.
Okay, so you're going to provide us with a proposed agreement?
Yes, yes, so I, I.
Formal request for the proposed agreement?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And, and you will, you know, we, in that agreement, we typically address, you know, the indemnification, all the insurance clauses and all that type stuff.
Okay, good. So that'd be the next step.
Yeah, that, yes, that's the next step. So this, this is just to kind of put it before you, the, the board here and, and, and see, see if we're, we can get your blessing and go forward.
Yeah, I think you have a blessing.
Okay, so I guess my next step is to put, put that formal proposal together, formal draft MOU together?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And send it over, and we'll make sure our legal gets it before we put it back on the next agenda.
All right.
All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Chris. Thank you, Brad.
All right. Appreciate the opportunity to talk with you guys. Thank you.
Yes, sir. No accident on three point one. All right, three point three, discuss, consider changes in our local agreement with my Bellevue or FNI contract for water development grant, Corey.
Okay, so we, we found a, a bit of an issue. We, we entered into a contract with Freezing Nichols, which is FNI back in January, February timeframe to for the drainage study that we're doing under the Water Development Board. And we've subsequently have a agreement with them for designing our Chambers Parkway extension and our Kilgore, Kilgore Parkway extension as well. And they have inner, they're giving us a break on those studies for the drainage portion of it, based on our agreement with the, the overall drainage study that we're doing. So they're, they're doing some different work, and then there was a interlocal that was done with Mont Bellevue for the same overall study in their portion, and the two don't really jive together. There's, and there's a bit of an issue there, so. We, I've been talking back and forth with, with Mont Bellevue, looking at the overall project. Samantha and I have been looking together. And then I, I had Freezing Nichols do some analysis on kind of what we were, we were looking at on this breakdown. And so initially, if we went with the, the agreement that was signed with Mont, Mont Bellevue as an interlocal in last month in July, the initial cost to the county would be about a little over eight hundred thousand dollars. Let me get the actual, eight hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, but the total out-of-pocket after the grant reimbursement would be only two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars as a overall cost to the county. And in doing so, I mean, you know, we've got a lot of, obviously, we've had a lot of flooding over the last few years. You know, with these drainage projects, it's, it's in some sensitive areas. We, we have the mapped areas, obviously, of Hackberry and Cotton and Cedar Bayou, but a lot of these areas that we're talking about through these extensions are in unmapped areas. And we're really going to need somebody to look at it in detail. And so my recommendation is that we find the two hundred and twenty-one thousand three ninety-nine to be able to fund Freezing Nichols do, doing this project so that the county could have the, the lead and making sure that these important drainage areas around that go through some of these subdivisions and affect our residents outside of Mont Bellevue is something that we can ensure as a county is handled properly and that, that it leads to no issues. So that's my, my recommendation.
Hey, Corey?
Yes, sir.
Now, you said that Freezing Nichols give us a discount on something. That was.
Right, so.
I mean, that, I mean, we can't tie that back to this grant.
It's not tied to the grant and, and.
We want to be careful. Stuff like that.
It's not, it's not part of the grant. It's just that they're working on a, you know, there are road projects as part, part of our CO process that's all, all tied together. So just that they're already working on in the, you know, in the vicinity on drainage as part of the road projects, but it's not part of this. Yeah, that part is not part of this contract, this interlocal or the study.
I just want to be careful. We don't make promises to them that we'll give them something else if they give us a discount on this. You see what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah. No, that's not, no, it's, we're, we're getting a benefit. It's, it's our benefit, not theirs.
Okay, okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
I want to make sure it's clear that we already have the agreement in place with Freezing Nichols, and we always expected we would have to spend this money. When Mont Bellevue came back, you know, and they, and they put up eight hundred thousand dollars, that was actually more, I think, than we were expecting. But the reason because they put up so much money is because they're covering such a big area. The way they have it drawn right now, they would have everything, control of everything west of the Trinity River and actually a little bit east of the Trinity River. Whether it's in Mont Bellevue Proctor, unincorporated, or, you know, areas of Chambers County, ETJ of Baytown or whatever. The way it's currently looking with the interlocal agreement, Mont Bellevue Mont Bellevue would have the lead role, everything west of the Trinity River. And, you know, I've had this conversation multiple times with Samantha and Corey and the judge. But, you know, and I think we're all pretty much in agreement that it is definitely in the best interest of the residents that Chambers County has the lead, especially on unincorporated areas of Chambers County. I got no problem with Mont Bellevue taking the lead, and quite frankly, I think they should in, you know, their ETJ and in their corporate city limits. But in the unincorporated areas, I think it's, you know, we owe it to our residents to do that, and there are several, like Corey said, the unmapped areas, Horsepin, Sawpit. I mean, there are just several that just don't even have a name, you know, Mark, you know, your Falcon's Point Drainage, all that stuff that goes in there, contributor back in the Cotton Creek. There's just so many, so many loose ends that I think is detrimental to a lot of people if we don't keep control of it.
I concur.
In that grant, does it state that we have, we, 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 that we can share control with Mont Bellevue and their city limits, or should we take control of everything so we can make sure? It, it comes back that if the grant is going to come back on our staff and the county, isn't it?
Yeah, the interlocal agreement with Mont Bellevue that went astray, and there was an exhibit in there that I think slipped through everybody's hands. You know, I'll let Samantha and Corey elaborate more on it. But there was an exhibit, and it, it was in the package. It was not, you know, it was our fault for overlooking it. We, we should have caught it. And had it been brought to my attention, I assure you, I would have never in a hundred, a hundred years agreed to it. But, you know, it's just one of those things that I cannot explain to you why it was not caught or pointed out, and, you know, it's not like Mont Bellevue was trying to cover it up. It was in, it was in the packet. We just did not catch it.
So Commissioner Gore, to answer your question, yes, from the beginning, from the application point, this has been a partnership with the city of Mont Bellevue, the city of Liberty, and the city of Dayton. When we submitted our application to the Water Development Board, we submitted the application very clearly stating that this was a partnership, and that's one of the reasons that we were funded. Because the Water Development Board was looking for large-scale, multi-jurisdictional projects, and they prioritize this because of the scale of it, because of the collaboration that was happening. So just to kind of reiterate that. Now, in the interlocal exhibits aside, it basically says that we're the contracted party with the state. Anything the city does, we have to approve, or we don't have to reimburse them the money. They have to meet the qualification set forth by the state's outlines for the study. And based on our expectations of them, if they don't do that, we don't reimburse them. So that's how we can make sure that they are, like, as far as the portions that we end up settling on that they study, we can make sure that they're meeting the, our needs. And then if they don't, we don't reimburse them, and our engineers take over and handle that. We've got a little bit of protection there.
So, I mean, I want to say I appreciate the city of Mont Bellevue being willing to fund the whole match, but, you know, I agree that that they shouldn't have to fund the match or where it doesn't affect their city, which, you know, which everything south of them, whether their drainage goes through, you know, it, it does affect up above in their corporate city limits, so. Fine, I'll entertain a motion. If we need to make a motion. Say it. I, I would make a motion that we renegotiate the interlocal agreement with Mont Bellevue to give the county control of everything in Interstate ten in west of the Trinity River.
I'll second that, your.
All right, most of my Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Tass. Any questions? In the favor?
All right.
Most curious. Three point four, discuss considering increasing front building setbacks along FM five sixty-five from one forty-six to thirty-one eighty, a hundred foot Chambers Parkway to fifty foot Needle Point fifty-five.
Okay, so similar to what we're discussing, you know, roadway expansions, we're currently working on a thoroughfare plan for the county. And I think some of this will end up showing some of the future needs as, as roads continue to develop and congestion, you know, happens along roadways. Traffic volumes increase. Obviously, roads need to be expanded. It's happening with twenty-three fifty-four, thirty-one eighty, five sixty-five's had a little bit of expansion. We're looking at doing more. We've been in discussions with Tech dot for quite some time on trying to make significant improvements to five sixty-five, trying to help with congestion that's on one forty-six. We're, you know, as we discussed, we're expanding Chambers Parkway. We're realigning Needle Point, and thus, we, we actually expect Needle Point to be constructed from north-south and handed over to the county for doing some paving in September, and so hopefully, we'll have that open to the public very soon. I know that's been a long, long wait. But we're anticipating needs coming up along that route as well, as far as needing to maybe do some widening. It's got a very small right-of-way. And so trying to, you know, essentially protect what we might have to end up, where we might need to buy some right-of-way after these thoroughfare plans are done, just trying to provide some setbacks that helps protect essentially development from, you know, building something that we end up having to then take or, or negotiate to buy and, you know, give some expectation there is kind of what this is around. And so we're, we're expecting some, some major growth in that area around five sixty-five Chambers Parkway and, and the Needle Point location, so. Hand it over to y'all for discussion.
Hey, Judge.
Yes, sir.
Hey, I got to ask the question. If they're, if we're requiring these setbacks, is that like on taxes? They get a reduced rate on their taxes on that property because they're not able to utilize it, or, or do they take it off their taxes because they're not able to utilize it? Or, or that just no?
Say it again, Commissioner. I'm sorry.
That's okay, Judge.
Practiced.
I'm just saying, if this is part of their property and they're not able to build on it, not able to do anything on it, is that a decreased value on their taxes on the tax?
No, that's going to be a appraisal district.
That's appraisal district business, right?
Well, I mean, if we're, if we're stopping them from utilizing this, what I'm getting to, and that was the question that was put to me, if we're stopping them from utilizing it, they're just curious, do they get a decreased value, or do they take it off their taxes? I mean, it's something to consider or look at.
Yeah, well, and, you know, you got setbacks on everything. There's safety issues, so like I said, that would be appraisal district call, in, in my opinion, anyway. But I, I see where it's coming from.
Right.
But, Corey, you done with that item?
Uh, yes, unless y'all have further questions.
All right, entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Okay. Most of my Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Tass. Those in favor?
All right.
All right. Most curious. Three point five, discuss, consider setback to restrict buildings, parking lots, and other permanent improvements along FM five sixty-five Needle Point and Chambers Parkway, Corey.
Okay, so normally, our setbacks would, we've, we've considered them as only vertical structures, essentially. We, we haven't included, you know, parking lot improvements and different things like that. And so just a consideration is, in these areas, if they built a building right to the potential setback line and then filled the whole rest of the area with a parking lot, and then we ended up expanding and. And then we ended up expanding and, and basically taking out the parking lot, we would essentially be destroying the value of, of the whole, even the building, because they'd have no parking uh potentially. So it was just a consideration of should, in these areas, should we include, you know, essentially that no permanent structures be a portion of that?
You know, I think it's important that everybody understand the areas in particular that we're talking about are very fluid at this time and uh we're actually looking at expanding these like soon, very, very soon, you know, uh right ways in place. And so there's actually development going on in particular areas around. And we just want to be sure that when they come to the DRC meetings and we start looking at it, that we can make them aware that we are getting in the process of getting these things ready to expand, widen some roads, add some bits and ditches in. And uh you know, sixty thousand other story, that's something that is going to take a little bit longer. But especially uh Needle Point Road and Chambers Parkway, those are things that we really think we will start acquiring the right ways. You know, dedicating those right ways literally within the next few months. So.
Yeah, that's a good point. And so uh right, and I, and I actually, so kind of going back a little bit to what Commissioner Gore was saying was, I, you know, uh true. Uh yeah, on these specific corridors, um you know, that would be obviously an, an issue with, with the value. But we're, to, to Billy's point, we're trying to uh, you know, these would be areas that we're, we're potentially buying as permanent right away. And so I think when they came to DRC or something like that, that's something that could be discussed and perhaps instead of building something that then we have to buy or affects them down the road, we can go ahead and have that discussion. And then hopefully uh we might be able to work out a deal to where we could go ahead and purchase that portion of their uh property as part of the permanent right away for the expansion of these, these uh roadways.
Yeah, so that'd take it off the tax rather than you'd also get paid for, for it.
Right, and it would help us uh, you know, working towards a mutual um, you know, projects, you know, without really hurting somebody after they've put something on the ground, you know, that's, that's kind of what we're looking at. I mean, trying to help out the process without uh destroying something that somebody puts in place, so.
Any other questions? Not entertain a motion. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Tass. Those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries three point six. Discussing considering agreement with KTN under a turn lane as part of the Kilgore Parkway widening project. Allowing KTN to begin accessing Kilgore Parkway now without the turn lane.
Uh, yes, sir, Judge. So we've, we've been working with uh KTN uh for quite some time on their development and their expansion of this facility. Um everybody realizes the truck traffic that's on five sixty five, the backups that occur, uh the turn uh the turning locations, their uh KTN's main access right now is uh adjacent to uh Ameriport Parkway. On five sixty five, we've um currently, if you, you know, go through there, if you don't get stopped by the train. Um you know, you, you have the potential of uh running into issues with trucks either turning in or turning out of those locations. Um you know, just like everything else, truck drivers get um, you know, uh upset with sitting for long periods of time and sometimes take chances and push, you know, push things. It's just a, it's a safety issue on five sixty five. Um so we, you know, working with them to have a access point to Kilgore. Uh the intent of that is to have them go back to the east and utilize ninety nine. Uh obviously, if you have uh trucks that are above the weight currently allowed on ninety nine, there is an issue there. So um we're still in discussions with um essentially what that's going to look like at that location. Uh ultimately, we see that a turn lane is needed. They've agreed to the turn lane, but they have uh already um bid out their work for the overall project. And so since the turn lane was not a part of that original work, it would be a change order to it, which would make it excessively expensive to add it. So kind of the thought would be that uh we're, we're widening Kilgore Parkway. Perhaps they could uh do an interlocal agreement with us to fund uh the portion of the turn lane where we bid it as part of our project and ends up being uh much cheaper to construct. It ends up adding the safety. Um this would be a temporary situation. But before we get to that point, we need to make sure uh which track, direction that traffic is going when it exits. Uh like I said, we, we really want to push uh that that traffic is going back to ninety nine. So uh that's kind of the information behind the overall. And my recommendation would be to pull the item until we can come up with that uh agreement on the uh, the traffic direction, exactly how that's going to function. Uh Billy might be able to add a little more to it, but that's where I'm at.
No, I agree. I think we need to pull it for now. The thing I would add, a lot of this hinges on the outcome of trying to get the uh weight restriction removed from uh highway ninety nine. Take ten. And I had three communications with Commissioner Ryan yesterday and actually uh spoke with someone else that's probably going to be taking it to the governor's office. I think we're making good headway on that. Hope to have an answer by the end of this week. Not sure about it, but we're making progress. And it looks like knock on wood, we will get the weight restriction removed off of ninety nine. So I
Great news.
Yeah, I'd like to give some kudos to Billy too. He's done, uh he's worked tirelessly uh on this effort to help uh push the trucks to ninety nine, which relieves congestion on one forty six. So uh he's, and when he talks about Commissioner Ryan, that's Commissioner Laura Ryan, which uh is essentially a uh board of directors over Tech Dot. So anyway.
Yeah.
And I'll echo that too, because Billy has worked hard on it. Thank you, Billy.
Without a doubt.
Uh huh. Alright, so we're going to pull three six. Let's go to three eight. We'll come back to seven, three eight to discuss, consider going out for bids. Strapping contract on various roadways, meeting minimum requirements, Corey.
Okay, so obviously, we've talked about uh Needle Point. Um that hasn't really had a, a stripe on it uh in the area that we're talking about down there, but it's, it's going to need it. As uh we're talking about the volume of traffic uh that's going to be going, utilizing that roadway. So we're going to be doing some improvements, widening it out. And uh the minimum requirements require a certain amount of traffic uh and certain width of the roadway. It has to look a certain way. We can't just stick a stripe on any road. It, it has to meet minimum requirements. So I submitted that in y'all's packet, just so that uh uh you're aware of that. But uh we would uh, we would have the stripe on that area. We have, you know, historically striped larger subdivision type facilities like McCullum Park Road, um like uh Plantation. And uh we, we would do Plantation. Uh another one that we anticipate using this on would be West Bay, which would be uh um completing soon as a part of the Tech Dot Grant project. And then the, the last one would probably be uh Bear Road. Um as we finish, hopefully get that bid out and completed in the next few months. So uh anyway, those would be the need. We would have the contract if, you know, if we uh decided that something else would be needed uh down the road, we could certainly do that. Um yeah, our, our road crews have had a hand striper which works very well for parking lots that they used at the COVID uh sites. And have done some parking lots uh around the county. Um they've done some one uh roadway edges. Uh but when you try to do a long stripe like that by hand, it's, it's difficult. A little, you know, sways in the road and on the edge and everything else affect it. And it doesn't come out as clean as driving it with a truck. So um this would allow us to give something that would probably uh should meet expectations of the traveling public and for the commissioners. So that's my recommendation.
Judge, you're muted.
I wonder why Corey wouldn't answer to me.
I would never do that.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Uh Joe Basin parking lot's got to be strapped.
Yes, sir.
So we can do that.
Those won't be, the, I think any of the parking lots, we should be able to handle within our existing budget and with our existing equipment. Unless you want to, I mean, any of that's all really handwork, even if we did it with a contractor. They're going to do it.
Okay, no, that's fine. And, and we're not in a big hurry to get it done, so.
Yes, sir.
Road and bridges, we can just put it on your radar.
Yeah, I think there are several parking lot projects and um, you know, uh county, county site locations that we should be able to pick up through the winter and do that stuff when roadworks not uh at its peak.
Good.
You like your first motion, Judge?
Yes, sir. Motion by Commissioner Tass.
Yes, sir.
Second by Commissioner Gore. Those in favor?
I
Opposed. Motion carries three point seven, provided update on fourteen oh nine and other road and bridge.
Okay, so uh as I think probably most are aware, we got a crossing at Gil Parkway. And uh Perry uh opened up uh last week, which uh as I understand it, uh thirty one eighty has been a little bit crazy. So uh hopefully that has helped uh with some relief. Uh hopefully more people find it, but I would just encourage um, you know, it's, it's a pretty long drive. I think maybe two miles from five sixty five over to the fourteen oh nine crossing. There are stop signs there and I would just advise traffic to uh make sure and stop at those locations, even though you might not see somebody there. Uh every time you go through, uh there could be a dump truck or every other heavy equipment there as we're still completing the roadway. And just to speak of that, I've, I've seen a lot of, you know, I guess information on social media about, you know, obviously the we have the uh asphalt down at this point. Uh it looks to the public like it's done for a lot of standpoints, but it's not ready for uh Tech Dot uh completely as of yet. We're getting close. So just to speak of that, we, we still have um the process, I'm, I'm hoping, uh well, actually I had got, I had a commitment from Tech Dot to um look over the uh south uh fourteen oh nine piece from I ten to five sixty five and the jug handles this week. I think Noel probably did go out there and take a look at that, but uh I actually got a update from uh Larry Marr with uh Danenbaum on some additional uh punch list items that need to be completed before we gain Tech Dot's final approval. Uh most of them are dealing with some signage, um and some electrical elements around the illumination. And some uh driveway, and then they had uh some striping issues on the jug handles. So hopefully, we will have those resolved uh on the south portion of fourteen oh nine uh this week. Um and so tentatively, I hope to gain Tech Dot's approval and be able to open south fourteen oh nine along with the jug handles around I ten uh sometime next week would be my hope. So um be looking forward to that. That's my expectation. And uh, you know, we'll go from there. Um as far as the bridge goes, we've got uh uh Angel Brothers, well, it was Angel Brothers that we bid the project to. They've been bought out by a uh company in um Beaumont, but um we, we've uh given them a notice to proceed. They have started work. They should be setting um, starting to work on the bridge uh this week. I think they're going to be doing some drilling and starting on that. Their expected completion as of right now is October of twenty two. So just uh basically fourteen months. Um I mean, hopefully we get some exceptional weather and they're able to move forward. I mean, it would be amazing if somehow we were able to complete that before school started uh next year. That would be uh, uh I guess a miracle at this point, but uh hopefully hopefully we can get that close and, and get that to happen. That would be great. Um, yeah, I have uh questions for me.
No questions? So um, I don't know if you mentioned um all the permits down on fourteen oh nine north. So is there a projected date to open it, Corey?
Oh, I didn't, yeah, I didn't mention that. So they're, they're, right now they're projecting to have that open in October of this year.
Good. Glad you said.
So somewhere like two and a half to three months, so. So we're, we're getting there. And that, and just to note, I've, I've heard that, you know, some thought that was slow. That's uh their projected date originally, uh based on their contract was to complete it in February of uh twenty two. So with this, they would still be about four months ahead of schedule. So uh that, that's, that's excellent. So like I said, there's if we get some dry weather at the right time, uh we, we might be able to, you know, make similar progress on the fourteen oh nine bridge. So we, we can hope.
Yeah, and Tech Dot did a really good job cleaning up that five sixty five underpass under I ten. Uh looks a whole lot better and safer.
Oh, I'm glad you brought that up. So I'm talking other projects. So I did, I, I have submitted some um uh intersection studies uh to look at uh with Tech Dot and HGAC to try to see if we can find some improvements. And one of them was the five sixty five AIH ten. Uh one is uh over in Winnie at the I ten and uh for, or fourteen oh six, I ten and uh all that come together over there in Winnie, pretty major uh intersection. We've got the uh thirty one eighty at um uh Legends Bay, which is a little bit uh odd with the way it ties in with the subdivision across the road. And uh obviously with the road expanding on thirty one eighty is uh going to have some more challenges. And then the other is the five sixty five and thirty one eighty. And so uh hopefully uh we can, you know, continue to improve those intersections and continue to look for safety opportunities.
And Corey, oh, I'm sorry, I talked to Greg uh about the, putting some more projects on the uh UTP. And one thing we discussed that he agreed with is the ramp reversals between thirty one eighty and five sixty five on I ten and also ninety nine.
Oh, ramp reversals, right, 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 right. Yeah, so that, right, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, when you started to say that, I was thinking of the flips that were originally on HGAC further to the east. Okay.
No, 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 I'm talking about ramp reversals.
Right, you're right. And uh so Tech Dot is involved in a study now and uh with um trying to figure out exactly between ninety nine, thirty one eighty uh the new fourteen oh nine that will be coming in and five sixty five, all being in a pretty tight area, how to best configure those ramps and uh do some reversals and make that all work out uh properly. So uh but it does need to be on the HGAC. Uh you're right.
Yeah, and, and actually that was Commissioner Hammond's idea. And you know, it really makes perfect sense because of that ramp reversal. It would allow people driving eastbound to go past thirty one eighty, take an exit, then they could get on fourteen oh nine. Uh and this same, in the same scenario, when you're coming back uh westbound.
Right.
Right. And so there was, just to let y'all know, there was originally, there was a uh configuration for doing something like that along fourteen oh nine. But with thirty one eighty, it kind of messed up and it all has to be approved. That, anything on the interstate has to be approved through the federal government. It's beyond even Tech Dot. So uh they have to do a specific study for that, so.
Hey Corey, um I drove Gil Parkway over the weekend just to try it out. Looks like we're at five sixty five. Um there's some um there's some bushes and stuff on the north side of Gil Parkway. Would you pass that on to Noel, please?
I will, and I, I asked him.
Line of vision.
Right, so uh and we had originally talked about trying to get some uh message boards out there to advise the public. I guess at this point, they're, they're aware, but just so you know, Tech Dot did look at it, but the right away is so tight in there, they could, you know, and kind of the steep drop off. They couldn't figure out how to uh get those in there uh to add safety. So uh but I will add the uh, the bushes in there. Do you know if that's on, is it on the state right away?
Yeah, it's on five sixty five.
Okay, alright.
North of Gil Parkway.
And look, I had to go to school yesterday after work and it appears thirty one eighty's opened up.
Yeah, I heard it was pretty messed up, people trying to figure out the
It's been messed up. I tried to figure it out for a long time. Yesterday, did you make it through there?
Okay. Now, you, you gotta define messed up over there.
Was there, well, let me, so I guess is there something? Was there, well, let me, so I guess is there something that I need to talk to text out about on that? I mean, is it beyond, is it, do you think it's just a traffic pattern with people trying to figure it out? Or is there something that needs to be changed?
Red lights for people are sitting five to eight minutes sometimes.
Oh, it was backed up southbound on Eagle Drive, way down. I don't know what it was yesterday. And this was, it's like six fifteen, so it wasn't really early.
Okay.
Everybody, everybody got used to the roundabout and they don't know how to handle red lights now.
That's right, Billy. Anybody in Chambers County would figure out a roundabout. That's new concept for certain.
Anything else, Cory? Any questions, Cory?
You know, I talked to Noel about that thirty one eighty intersection and his approach is let's wait and get it all finished and get it running the way it's supposed to run. But I still think that that's, that's not gonna solve the problem of the, the traffic coming off of ten on the thirty.
I agree, Tommy.
I think we gotta get those ramps done sooner than later and that, that'll help a lot. Still gonna have traffic backed up every day, but that's just the nature of that intersection.
The concerning part, Tommy, is it's gotta go all the way to the feds too, like talking about, but it would eliminate a whole, I'm guessing, twenty, twenty five percent of the traffic.
Right. Well, we're gonna have to get a Kilgore Parkway finished and, you know, get fourteen oh nine open and that'll eventually leave some of that traffic.
That's right. And like Noel said, once, let's get it all done, then let's look at it and evaluate.
Well, that'll, some of that's actually above the area office level. It's in the district level. So let me, I will, I will start a conversation or continue the conversation, I guess. I have talked to Adam over in Transportation Planning Department, which was heading up that study. I'll check back in with him to see where it's at and where they're at and just let him know of the ongoing issues that we're having and concerns in that area. And just one other note, I guess on a different note, the county is gonna be doing some ditch cleaning with our contractor on five sixty five coming down from the new West Side complex to try to improve drainage. They should be starting that, well, they actually should start it today. So y'all should, y'all should see that work, but just in case y'all get any, you know, questions of why the county's working out there, just, just know that ultimately it ends up helping all of us. So anyway.
Well, heavy rains flooding our. Heavy rains flooding our project.
So yeah, we need to dry up and, but they're, you know, if there's small areas where we can work together to solve issues and, you know, we're working together. I think that's a good thing. So.
I agree. All right. Anybody else have anything for Cory? No action on three point seven. Thank you, Cory. Take care.
Thank you, Cory. Nice, Cory. Good to see you.
Yes, you too. Y'all get feeling better.
All right. Economic Development Tourism, five point one. Y'all need a break before we go to this?
Oh, yeah.
All right, let's take five. Twelve eighteen. We'll come back at twelve twenty five. All right, Cork come to recess, five point one. Discuss, consider approving escrow agreement with AMG Bank, DBA. Zion Bank is part of the Texas Water Development Board's Flood Infrastructure Fund. Sam, good morning again.
Good morning again. So this is part of the, the Texas Water Development Board's Flood Infrastructure Fund Requirements. This grant I've talked about in the past is a little bit different in that they're gonna actually deposit all of the grant portion of the funds into an account. They asked that we set up an escrow account to put that money in. We will own the account, but they will manage it, meaning it's gonna be just like every other grant in that we have to ask permission before we can draw from it. Nikki's worked really, really hard on finding a bank that was close to us because unfortunately, Anawak National Bank is not a comptroller approved depository. And then she went over and met with AMG Bank, who's, is, who is who we have identified that we want to use. I did want to make a note that there is an error and it's my fault in the agenda item. It should be Zion Bank, DBA, AMG Bank, and I've reversed it. But the escrow agreement is something that Nikki's worked on with Nathan Brandon Mark. And we all feel like it's fair to the county.
Okay, so gotcha. Next, any motion?
So moved, Judge?
Second. First by Commissioner Tass, second by Commissioner Gore. Any questions? Those in favor?
All right.
Those mostly carries five point two. Discuss, consider approving increased FY twenty one. Text out ramp grant from fifty thousand to fifty thousand total to a hundred thousand to cover additional expenses. Sam.
So as you guys know, ramp grant is a fifty fifty match partnership that we have through text, with text dot. It's called the Routine Airport Maintenance Grant. Anyway, our, our contracted amount for this year was fifty thousand us, fifty thousand them. Paige has been working really hard going through invoices and submitting for reimbursements. And she's found that there's about forty thousand dollars in invoices that we are gonna be over on. And so she reached out to text dot to see if they would be amenable to increasing our amount unless for, through this program, they really are easy to work with. And so they approved that we go ahead and increase with your approval to one hundred, one hundred. I don't think that we're gonna need the full amount, but it would give us wiggle room on anything that is an eligible expense. And I kind of figure that paying half of the cost is better than paying a hundred percent of the cost. So that's why we're asking for you guys' approval, just to go ahead and execute those documents and have that increase made.
Is that a hundred for Anawak and a hundred for Winnie or fifty for each?
So each airport has its own grant. So the Winnie will remain at fifty fifty. Anawak, we're bumping up to one hundred and one hundred. Text that ramp grant runs on their fiscal year cycle, which is September to October, or October to September. So we're nearing the end cycle of that grant. Winnie is still well within the grant amount. We've still got some wiggle room there. Anawak is over. So it's only the Anawak one that we are adjusting. Just kind of a note, I am gonna ask next year, and I've talked to the judge about this. I think for both locations, we're gonna go ahead and bump it up to the max, which is one hundred, one hundred for both Anawak and Winnie for next year. Just kind of so you guys can get that on your radar, because I know that Ronnie Joe has a couple of projects that he'd like to accomplish that are eligible expenditures under that grant. But today I'm just asking to bump Anawak up to one hundred.
Yeah, we'll adjust that, man. If we don't use it, it's just still.
Right. It's, it's no skin off our back if we don't use it.
All right, entertaining motion. Motion for approval, Judge?
Second, Judge.
First by Commissioner Gore, second by Commissioner Tass. Questions? Here none of those in favor? Mostly carries five point three. Discuss, consider approving for Anawak Boat Ramp Closure, September ninth through the twelfth, twenty twenty one, Texas Gator Fest. Sam?
So you guys had approved several weeks ago to allow the park use agreement for Texas Gator Fest. And now they're, they're asking, they do this every single time, to close the boat ramp just for those three days of the festival. Even though they have the park use agreement for longer than that, the boat ramp will still be available for use, except during the actual days that the festival's going on, should you guys approve.
Hey, Judge?
Yes.
Just, just a side question about the Gator Fest. I mean, I see our construction N and T and them's out there taking everything down and getting everything tore. I mean, are they gonna put a temporary fence around that? Because I imagine there's gonna be holes and everything else, because they're taking up the poles and they're taking up everything. I mean, should we talk with them about putting up some temporary fencing to keep spectacle out of there for someone? They don't get hurt?
Yes, sir. And I talked to Kirk yesterday and he's walking with him on there.
And I talked to Kirk yesterday for about an hour, Judge, and Commissioner Gore, he's very well aware of that and pressing accordingly.
Okay, but the contractor will do that, not us?
Yes, correct.
Correct.
Motion for approval, Judge?
Second, Your Honor.
Most of my Christopher Gore, second by Christopher Tass. Any other questions? Those in favor? All right. Those mostly carries five point four. Discuss, consider lying Texas Gator Fest. Utilize Chambers County property and parking lots on Airport Road as Plan B parking area, September tenth through the twelfth.
So this is something that the county has allowed them to do in the past. The, the Plan A and what most often happens is they'll use the ground within the park and then that property right directly east of the park for parking. If it becomes too wet, then they, in the past, have utilized buses and the airport location to park vehicles and bus them, bus patrons to the actual park. So they just asked that you guys consider allowing that again.
Sam, Ronnie Joe, okay with that? Have you talked to him?
I haven't talked to him yet, but I will talk to him this afternoon.
Okay, good. I know it's been done before and it's worked out fine, so.
You need a motion, Judge?
Do.
So move, Your Honor.
Second. Mr. by Commissioner Tass, second by Commissioner Gore. Any questions? Those in favor? Mostly carries. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank y'all.
All right, consent. Got six, one. Oh, excuse me, six, one. Parks and Recreation, discuss consider hiring Gulf Coast Electric to remove Musco Lights in Fort Anaway Park and install them at Pony Field on Cook Road in Winnie, Texas.
Judge, if I might, I've been on this for a while, especially about Musco Lighting. This is a good deal for, for us moving this over there to the Pony League Field. That's gonna get some great lighting that I think it's only three years old. Commissioner Gore could be wrong, but Musco Lighting's got, I think, a twenty or twenty five year warranty, Judge, and it's just best in baseball and athletics for lighting. So I think this is a good move. And I move for approval, Your Honor.
Most of my Christopher Tass?
Second.
Second back of Mr. Gore. And a quote came in yesterday, so you wanna make your motion second up to seventy two five?
I do.
That's true.
Okay. I was looking for it here. It's, it's.
Can, can I comment, Judge, before you revise that motion?
Sure.
When I spoke with Kurt yesterday, he did not want to approve reinstalling them at this time. He only wants to do the demo and take it to that. I don't know what other people's conversations with Kurt was, but he did express that at this point, he only wanted to take them down and store them over behind his office because he does not want that contractor to have to pull off to go reinstall them at Cook Field at this time. He.
Yeah. And Commissioner Combs, I want to validate that. I thought on this Cook Field that it found a home for them. I was under this understanding as well too, it's gonna be stored too. I, I thought maybe by the time this agenda came out, they'd found a home for it. So.
Well, the way this reads is you're going to take them off and reinstall them. And that quote for fifteen thousand dollars is to take them down and to reinstall them. All he wants to do this time is to take them down and store them and then go back and reinstall them at a later day.
Does he want us to approve, approve it though? The whole project and then it, then he'll direct them when to?
I think so.
I think that's what he was wanting to do, Judge, with it, was what he spoke to me about and with the proposal that he sent out to us to seventy two five, was to go ahead and prove that and then not pull them off, but they can do them, put them up.
Okay.
Your Honor, yeah, my motion's still good with the seventy two five attached.
Okay. And your second also?
Yes, sir.
Back and a motion second. Any other questions, comments, those in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we give a sound. Take one.
Not at this time, Judge.
First thing two.
Give me one second, Your Honor.
Okay, first thing three while he's looking.
Six.
Payroll changes?
Yes, sir.
Pull those to executive session?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mark?
I'm good, Your Honor.
Commissioner Ford? You're muted, Billy.
Hey, let's take the job descriptions also with payroll changes into executive sessions.
Okay, so five and six, executive session?
Yeah, and I just wanted to, and I assume we did, but this is a question for maintenance, then for purchasing. But I'm just wondering if they got bids on these projects that they're doing for the Anawak Ball Fields and the maintenance nineteen and twenty.
Eighty twenties for Seer Bow Winix, isn't it?
Yes. Tommy, I'm a commissioner.
You are a. Do you want to ask that question for your approval?
Actually, Judge, I'm okay with it. I, I will follow up. I meant to follow up with maintenance on that yesterday and just anyhow, did it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's over the levels, so I'm sure they got quotes on it.
Yeah.
All right, another motion to prove, except for number five and six, go to executive session.
So move, Judge?
Second.
First by Commissioner Tass, second by Commissioner Hammond. Those in favor?
I.
Those mostly carries, it's twelve forty one P M. And we will go to executive session under personnel issues. Twenty point one, twenty point two. Kilgore Regional Drainage, twenty point three, purchase of property and twenty point four, discuss consider update on frontier dispute Chambers County School lands. So we will recess at twelve forty two P M to executive session.
Actually been losing weight, Mark, so I ain't mad about it.
Alright, court come to order, executive session, it's one twenty-nine P M. Uh, no action for the items under executive session, uh, but I do need a motion on consent. Consent items five and six, nineteen, five and six.
Motion for approval, Judge?
Second. First by Commissioner Gore, second by Commissioner Combs. No further discussion, those in favor?
Alright.
Close, motion carries. Nothing further to come for the court, we are adjourned. Thank you guys, have a good day, Godspeed.
Are we gonna do it a budget workshop?
No, no, but I don't think we have anything, David, so. Alright, questions there and just give them a.
Thank you Judge, because I'm hungry.
Alright, me too.